The time is now 1:15. The time is now 1:15 and a quorum of the board is present. The regular board, the regular meeting of the State Board of Education is reconvening. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today. However, I would like to bring to the board's attention that there are more than 20 persons registered to speak, which would put us past the 60 minutes allotted at this time for the bylaws.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Evans. With the number of people that have registered for public participation, we would exceed the one-hour allotment in today's agenda. The board bylaws state that before a vote is taken on an agenda item, the public is given the opportunity to comment on a specific item under consideration. This means that we will need to allow for all registered public comment participants to be heard, to be heard prior to the discussion and vote on the health standards. Today, we will not be able to set a specific time limit for, an extension for, public participation, and we'll hear all public comments at this point of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to extend public participation until all registered vote, all registered participants had a chance to share their comments? Dr. Pugh?
Is that for all three minutes?
No, this is just to extend the public participation period from one hour to beyond one hour, until everybody is heard. Not the time limit on the, how much time each participant has, but to extend the public participation period that's on the agenda.
Probably need to get a second and then discussion.
Well, that would be a good idea. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a second? Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, discussion.
I can start it off since I made the motion.
Absolutely.
We want to hear from everyone, and so currently, the bylaw state that we can go, three minutes is the limit that we can, of the minimum that we can go down to. So this motion right now is just to extend the period beyond the one hour. That's usually allotted to make sure that we can hear from everyone who's in the room and everyone who's on the line. And I hope that we can get through this vote first so we can hear from people.
Okay, any other discussion?
So I just, yes.
Yes.
I just want to clarify.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes, I want to clarify. So the people starting in a few minutes will be given three minutes. Is that right? No, but that's what I'm asking, I'm just asking.
Let me, okay. To, at this point, your answer is yes.
Okay.
This motion is to extend the period on the agenda for public participation beyond the one hour that we normally have. If the board wants to make another motion on changing the time limit by suspending the bylaws, that can be another motion. So right now, we're voting on extending the public participation time limit until everyone is heard. Senator Bullock?
Your microphone.
So if we vote to extend the time limit, is with the current rule in place?
Correct. But you can make another motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll withhold my, my, my thought process until we get through it.
Any other, ready for, okay. There's no other discussion. Ms. Evans, will you take the roll call vote on extending the public partition, participation portion of the agenda? Bullock?
An apprehensive yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion passes. Dr. Pugh?
I would like to make a motion that we suspend the bylaws and reduce the time. I'm going to put out there a minute and a half, and if there are friendly amendments, I will take those friendly amendments. But my motion is to reduce from three minutes to a lesser amount of time for, so that we can get through everyone in the building and on the phone.
I have a question.
There's a, it's a motion, is there support? Dr. Robinson, thank you. Senator, questions?
How many people are queued up total?
Currently, current numbers that I have are 50 online and 82 in person.
So?
137 total.
And how much time doing the math is that? I'm sorry.
So we're still, Senator Bullock, you still have the floor.
So, I, I would ask that the sponsor of the motion make it one minute.
Any other discussion?
Question. You would think that when we voted on extending the time of public comment, that we voted on it under the premise of the bylaws being in place, which is three minutes. Now, we're going to suspend the bylaws and reduce the time, and that doesn't seem procedurally appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh and then Mr. McMillan.
And I think, let me not say I think. I know that we are being respectful of everyone's time. Everyone cannot sit four to six minutes on a line, so that's being respectful for, of everyone that's in this building, people who may have to go and get children, people on the phone who may not be able to sit that long. So, again, reducing the time so that we're respectful of people who have come to give their public voice today.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Mr. McMillan?
Well, I'm certainly willing to stay here as long as it takes to hear everybody for three minutes. You know, there's people that have driven hours and hours to be here, and they have a three-minute presentation because we told them that they have three minutes. And to, you know, at the last minute, tell them that you're going to have to cut it down. You know, if you would have told them that you were going to do this a few days ago, that would be possible, that might have been, or that you might be doing this. You knew there was going to be a lot of people here. You know there's a huge amount. I mean, my emails were 20 to one against this, and we know the public comment was, you know, four, or three to one, or four to one against it. So the formal public comment, so I think that we should stick to three minutes. That's what the public expects. And as a matter of fact, talking about the public, you know, on page five, it talks about the standards and guidelines versus curriculum, and it talks about, you know, why we're here. And it references MCL 388.994, and you look at that, and it talks about how, whereas, as explained in the address to the people accompanying Article 8, Section 3 of the State Board of Education was to provide its constitutional leadership by a state-level policymaking body, which was to emphasize two fundamental principles. One, the concern of all people in the educational process, processes as a safeguard for democracy. And two, greater public participation in the operation of educational institutions. And that is why we're here. That's one of the primary things, is to hear from the people and to, you know, pull a switch on them and say, you know, we meet once a day, once a month. This is not a big deal. If we have to stay five, six hours, seven hours, well, let's hear from the people. This is, this is a very important, you know, it went from 14 pages in 2007 to 74 pages of standards with a lot of controversial stuff here that, you know, they're not going to be able to have this opportunity to address the policymakers like they do right now. And so I think it's critical and important that we give them the three minutes and that we sit there and do our job. And I can't believe that we're going to cut them off.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Tilly?
I do want to say that with three minutes, that would push us to almost seven hours. If we cut it down to a minute and a half, that would put us at three and a half hours approximately. And definitely want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to say their piece.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Pugh?
We are holding up time, once again, for board members to tell falsehoods and to filibuster. Tom, I spoke to you at 1:15 PM on October 30th, so do not act like this is a surprise. You thought that it was a good idea that we take up the discussion that we had at our last meeting, which was presented by you and board member Snyder to reduce the time to get through. This is not about us, this is about people who want to speak and making sure that they have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Senator Bullock? And then Ms. Lipton.
Well, some of this is great grandstanding. Reducing public comment time is a common occurrence in every facet, of every level of government, every level of business. When there is a multitude of people, it won't change the dissension or advocacy from the individual, no matter if they drove, again, one minute, three minutes, five minutes, or drove 10 minutes or an hour to get here to say what they want to say.
Thank you, Senator Bullock. Ms. Lipton?
Just, just a couple of things. The, I think that this is a very sound compromise. And the reason why is because the, the board has extended the time period. So the board could have said, public comment happens in one hour for the agenda that was approved. And then there would be a multitude of people that would not get to speak at all. So the decision to, I mean, I applaud the body to take the step to increase the amount of time for public comment. I also think that it's wise to do that in a way that is respectful of everyone's time. And by, I would, I would suggest limiting the public comment to one minute so that people are concise and efficient with their arguments. And if there are repetitive arguments, perhaps, you know, people could think about new arguments or what have you instead of, but, but again, it's just, I think it's a very, it's a, it's a good compromise to be able to be respectful, but also to, you know, to allow for, you know, the people that have registered to, to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Pugh?
I think that, I'm sorry.
Oh, did I call, is it your turn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, our president did call me and say to think about it. I've thought about it. I wanted to make sure they weren't going to try to put it after the vote, so I'm glad that that's not the case. But, you know, this is, this is, I think, outrageous. I think that there are people that spent hours and hours looking at these studies or these standards. There's experts that we, that we're going to hear from. Because when this gets presented, it's going to be presented from one angle, the pro angle. And it's, and, and questions will be made by us, and it'll be the, only the pro. Now, if you were going to tell me that some of the people who are opposing this could also come up during the presentation and discussion, well, then I might be a little bit more inclined to, to be persuaded to do otherwise with regards to this vote. But to suggest that the only people, only time we're going to hear opposition, you're going to, you're silent, you're limiting that. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that we're going to be given that I think we need, and we need more than a minute and a half from them.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you, first bite at the apple and hopefully last.
I'm sorry.
I said, first bite at the apple and hopefully the last.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Everybody wants to get the show on the road. I do want to say just a couple of brief things. Last month, when I voted to limit public comment is because this board wanted to vote to cut people off and send them home without giving public comment. This month is another opportunity to show that the earnest effort is to give everyone an opportunity to make full public comment. Some of the most controversial issues and negotiations in history take hours, days, or months. It is okay for us to sit here and endure the responsibility of good governance. And honestly, what, what we will about, what we are about to see is really the fact that we've had a general majority of this body since 1963 determine such policy. So let's be clear. It would be great to hear from all of you for your full allotted time.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh?
I heard a friendly amendment to what I suggested as one and a half minutes to one minute. I do accept that friendly amendment if the second or of, I don't know who seconded.
Dr. Robinson.
If, if, if he will. I do want to clear up, there was no one at this table who was not looking to give everyone an opportunity. We were talking about how we placed public comment. Did we, so I do want to clear that up. And then I call the vote.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. So the vote is on one minute, on the amendment of one minute.
Can I ask a clarifying question? The bylaws also specify 10 minutes for a group. Is there consideration to change that?
What's to spend in the bylaws?
So her question is, if the bylaws currently have 10 minutes for the group, for a group presentation, how much time does the board want to give a group?
And do we want to amend the, the motion to include that as well?
The motion was called.
So, okay, we'll vote on that and come back around. I'm ready to vote.
It's into a discussion.
Excuse me?
No, not for you, but.
Thank you, Senator Bullock. Ms. Evans, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, and just to clarify, this is on one minute because you agreed to the friendly. Very good, thank you. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So do we need to clarify the group?
To my knowledge, we have religious groups in the room that have been fasting.
Ms. Snyder, to the chair, please. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. To my knowledge, we have fasting groups in the room that we're going to utilize a 10-minute.
Ms. Snyder, would you like to make a motion?
No, I would like who's extending or changing our bylaws to make such motion, because the bylaws do apply to 10 minutes for a group.
I'd rather no further motions be made.
All right.
Cut it. So I, I.
Senator Bullock?
I'd like to, I move to amend the group's time to half, to five minutes to make a presentation, pro or nay.
Thank you. Senator Bullock, is there support? Ms. Lipton? All right, any questions? Discussion? Hearing none?
We've, yes, I have discussion. We've done this the wrong way.
Mr. McMillan?
We haven't.
Mr. McMillan? Mr. McMillan, thank you.
We have not suspended the bylaws.
We did in the motion.
There wasn't a vote to suspend the bylaws. There was the vote to limit it to one minute, but you got to suspend the bylaws first.
It was all one motion. He said, I move to suspend the bylaws and go to a minute and a half.
For suspending the bylaws?
Threshold?
It's not majority. It's not a majority, it, to suspend the bylaws.
While we hold on that one, Ms. Snyder?
Moved to suspend the bylaws in relationship to individual comment, to go from three minutes to one minute. We did not move to suspend the bylaws in relationship to group comment, which is why we're having this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Senator Bullock?
I restate, I moved to suspend the bylaws and move the time for groups to five minutes.
Is there support? Ms. Lipton? Any questions or discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. McMillan?
That on this extremely important topic, that the vast majority opposed in, in the formal public comment, the vast majority oppose in all the correspondences to the board, the vast majority in polling are like two-thirds to three-fourths opposed to this, to certain parts of these, the most controversial. So in all of these areas, certainly, the, the Democrats want to silence and try to keep quiet as much as they can, anything factual or any opinions of the public. It doesn't surprise me that they're doing this. But it, you know, this is clearly an effort to not hear the full, the full arguments that were going to be made.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Dr. Pugh?
You were going to say the same thing. I want to hear from the people. Call the vote, um, call the vote.
This is on group, suspending the bylaws for five minutes for the group. Correct. You. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Should I move over with rules? Okay. Those of you that have registered to provide public comment, I will review the rules. Each speaker will have one minute to address the board, and I will monitor the time. We will be strictly, strictly following the time limit to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. Please conclude your sentence and your comments when the timer goes off. I will be going through and saying 10 names at a time because we do have persons that are in holding rooms throughout the building so that we make sure that we're able to get those that have registered in order today. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for everyone. Any who, anyone who disrespects another person by name or in any other way will be asked to stop. Public participation will take place both in person and online, and will begin with the individuals present with us today and then move tho, to those waiting in the queue online. The first, the order of the first 10 people will be Herman Barb, Mark Forshee, Ellen White, Brianna Bryant, Taryn Gal, Sarah Yokum, Mira Schwartz, Devia Nelyuri, Richard Halinga, Patricia Durrell. Herman Barb, if you will please, at the end of the table, there is a handheld microphone in a stand. If you'll sit there, and whenever you're ready, you may begin your public comment.
Good afternoon, my name is Herman Barbey. I'm a resident of West Bloomfield, Michigan, father of amazing fifth grader who attends school in Oakland County. I'm also an active member of Stand Up Michigan, which is an organic grassroots movement made up of we the people, whose vision is to reclaim and defend the rights and liberties of Michigan, or starting with our parents and our children. That includes defending parents, the ability provided to us by the state law to opt out our children from any state sanctioned or public school sex education instruction, which we, the people and the parents, may seem and deem as inappropriate. Please see MCL 380-1507 for reference. So what does this mean if it passes? It means the public school teachers will be forced to teach topics such as newly created, non-traditional gender identity, sexual orientation, and have conversations with students that may be contrary to their own personal beliefs. It means students will be required to take these courses in order to graduate. It means that public schools will be teaching material that should be discussed at home with and by their parents. It means measures that we have in place in Michigan regarding sex education.
Comment today. Thank you. Next up is Mark Forshee. Thank you so much, and whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, why? Why is there this incredible determination to push sex education in front of children? Kindergartners, first graders, second graders, third graders? I shudder to think what you're going to present to juniors and seniors. Why? Who wrote all this? Who promoted all this? That's not publicized, it just appears like a bat in the night. We would like to know more about this before any vote. Also, parents are thoroughly being disrespected because parents should have primacy here that what they say about sex education should go. And not, they should have, not just opt out, they should have opt in. The school should ask the parent if they want their child in there, and the parent says no, that's it. What the parent says, go. They're disrespecting parents with this. Also, what about the will of the people? There are a lot of people here and around the state, everyone I've talked to says this is crazy. If it passes today, who cares about the will of the people?
Comment today. Next is Ellen White. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ellen White. I am a woman of science. I graduated with a degree in science. I was saved by science on the day of my birth with an emergency C-section, and I was saved again by science when I discovered I had six aneurysms in my brain. These guidelines are scientific. They are based on age-appropriate recommendations and what children should know for their own safety. This is about safety, not identity. This is about telling children, here is what you are allowed to be. What you are allowed to be. And safe should be priority number one. And that is why I support this, because I believe that it will encourage children to learn how to keep themselves safe. And I am done.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Brianna Bryant. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Young people, Generation Z, in the community that you serve are calling forth for comprehensive and inclusive sex ed and standards. We are watching you, and history is watching the example that you set forth. My name is Brianna Bryant. I am 24 years old, and I'm a Detroit scholar from preschool to 12th grade. I am a prime example of a scholar, and here advocating to you today. I am also a person who is a survivor of domestic violence. I believe that the section that talks about mental health and emotional and healthy relationships is so crucial. I wish I had the tools and language to talk about my feelings, what has currently happened to me, and domestic violence. That is something that may not have been highlighted here today with all of you. Inclusive sex ed is harm reduction and prevention. Can you imagine the tools that I would have known if I had comprehensive sex ed in Detroit? This means a lot to me, and I hope that you highly consider taking this in consideration.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Taryn Gal. If you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Taryn Gal. I am here today to express my strong support for adoption of the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. These standards are supported by the organizations that represent Michigan's schools, school leadership, and families. This includes the Michigan Association of School Boards, of superintendents and administrators, of school psychologists, of secondary school principals, of intermediate school administrators, and the Michigan Parent Teachers Association, among others. This is not fringe, this is mainstream of Michi, this is the mainstream of Michigan education. The people responsible for educating our students support these standards because they are grounded in evidence aligned with national best practices and designed to meet the real needs of students today. These are public school standards, and public schools serve all students. Michigan students are diverse, and they are ready, and they are already in our classrooms. Public schools do not get to choose who shows up. Our responsibility is to make sure that every student can learn in an environment that is respectful and safe. Naming and teaching about topics that reflect real students' lives is simply good education.
Thank you for your comment today. I'll name the next five that should be in the holding pattern. Lyra Opalitnan, Judy Gumpa, Alexandra Johnson, Danny Hereitt, and Jeff Sokhonic. The next public speaker that can come to the table is Sarah Yokum, please. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, I'm reading on behalf of Anamika Youth Co-facilitator at Moash. Her statement says, upon coming to college, I have seen how the lack of comprehensive health education is a severe detriment to the health and safety of young students. The lack of knowledge forced upon them has left them more susceptible to being taken advantage of while also alienating them from understanding certain social and psych, physical cues. This gap in understanding does not protect them. In fact, it serves to do the opposite. It puts them in greater danger because they do not have the foundations needed to make safe decisions. As such, I have seen people rush into situations they are not able to handle because they have never been prepared to. A new environment is stressful to anyone, but when you lack the tools to handle it properly, you are at a far greater risk of falling into a negative physical, emotional, or mental state. Health education must start at a young age that these tools can be built. Censoring information will only serve as a detriment to the child and the adult they will become. There is far more safety. There is far more safety in teaching students about their mental and emotional health than there is in shielding them from it. These updates standards will equip students with the knowledge."
Thank you. Mira Schwartz? Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I'm Mira, I'm a graduate of Michigan Public Schools. When I was 13, I got my first period and my whole life changed. I was in extreme pain, bleeding through products within an hour, yet I was told this was normal. In my seventh grade health class, I was told to expect painful periods. No part of that class or any health class I had taken in Michigan prepared me for the harsh reality that one in 10 women experience, which is endometriosis. I learned about endometriosis from an after-school peer education program, not in my health class. It took me years to get a diagnosis and fight through stigma surrounding my treatments, stigma that our health education standards unintentionally reinforce by teaching contraceptives only as tools to prevent pregnancy and ignoring other treatments students could benefit from if only they were given the awareness of them. By passing the proposed standards, we can provide students with the education of when to seek medical consultation, along with the ability for educators to share treatments like hormonal birth control. Michigan has the opportunity to validate their students' experiences, promote early diagnoses, and ensure that young people can advocate for their health. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Divya Nelluri. I apologize for the pronunciation of your name if I got it wrong. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Divya Nelluri and I'm here to express my strong support for the newly proposed Michigan Health Education Standards. As a youth advocate and recent high school graduate, I often found myself navigating health information on my own. As an immigrant from India, a lot of what I knew about health, specifically topics like mental health, well-being, sexual health, and markers of healthy relationships, were influenced by heavy cultural stigma, forcing silence instead of answers. In my own home, these topics were never brought up, and my parents, like so many others in our community, relied on our school system to impart the necessary skills and knowledge regarding health education to me and my brother. Little did they know that the same system they placed so much trust in led to much more confusion for me and my peers. We struggle to comprehend our own identities, relationships, and boundaries. These standards are a vital step to building a more equitable future for all students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Richard Halinga. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Richard Halinga. As the parent to two children, one of whom is transgender, I'm gratified that the State Board of Education's new health standards include information about gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. These standards, had they been in place several years ago, would have made my transgender child feel seen among his peers. For years, my children participated in the yearly health unit in our local schools. My wife and I see health literacy as an important part of their public school education. Several years ago, when a trans child was in middle school, we opted him out of the health education unit. When we received the notice about the health unit from the school, we told our son it was coming up. He said he didn't want to do it because he said that he was frustrated that there was often no discussion of people like him or any gay people. All the information, though accurate, was solely about heterosexual sex and preventing AIDS. So we pulled him. These new standards, however, being both age-appropriate and rooted in scientific evidence, provide the needed information for kids like my son. I am happy that with the implementation of these new standards, that trans kids like my son will no longer be excluded, but will now be better seen and respected as the normal kids they are. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Patricia Durrell. Whenever, I'm sorry, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Patty Durrell. I'm reading on behalf of Kay Keller, a youth leader and community member. I'm writing to express my strong support for the newly proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. While I understand that the draft standards will continue to evolve based on stakeholder feedback, I urge the State Board of Education to maintain the integrity and inclusivity of the framework. Please resist efforts to remove the content that is vital to ensuring all Michigan students of every background, gender, and identity receive a health education that is accurate, affirming, and relevant to their lived experiences. As a youth advocate and community member, I've witnessed firsthand the profound impact that comprehensive and inclusive health education can have on the well-being of Michigan's youth. As a trans and queer student who grew up in a rural community, I've received no proper health education. The only thing I remember learning about was HIV and that was it. I can recall my health teacher telling me that they were not even allowed to say gay or transgender in the classroom. Because of this, I felt incredibly insecure when it came to relationships or knowing about my own body. Lack of comprehensive health education did not make me stop thinking about identity or intimacy, I just became more scared of it. I turned.
I'll give the next five names that should be in the, come to the board for holding pattern is Erin Riley, Sterling Bentley, Lori Mayers, Michelle Mustakis, Meta Mendel Reyes. Next for public comment is Lyra Opalitnan. I'm sorry, I tried. Thank you. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Lyra Opaliken, a 21-year-old resident of Michigan. I seeking the support of the proposed updates to the State Board of Education standards. I remember growing up in Michigan, learning what it's like to be in the queer community and thinking that because I didn't love like my peers did or because I experienced my gender in a way no one else seemed to do, that I was somehow unnatural. It was extremely isolating, causing me immense distress and anxiety and not having a place to actually experience and talk to these things in school. The health education did not have anything to say regarding LGBTQ+ identity, choosing to keep us invisible by solely focusing solely on heteronormative understandings of health. Not only would having representation and inclusion emphasized within our curriculum in schools actively improve my experience as a student and led to less hardship, but I would have had the environment necessary to actually be a student. I didn't want to learn in a school that didn't value my identity and didn't see my identity as legitimate. And so that's why I believe the standards today that are being presented, which are not only evidence-based but age-appropriate, are necessary for youth within the LGBTQ+ community to have a supportive environment that allows them to thrive as lifelong learners. Adopting these updated standards of health education would create an environment we all desire where all youth can feel motivated to learn. Thank you.
Next is Judy Gumpa. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, my name is Judy Gumper. I'm an 86-year-old grandmother and I'm here to support the position of the new health standards for Michigan schools. I worked in a school for 30 years. I've been around children and all they need is someone to listen to them and to trust who they know who they are. So thank you so much for your support in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alexandra Johnson. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, I'm Ally Johnson. I'm from Kalamazoo and I'm the mom of three kids. All my kids are in elementary school right now and one of my children is transgender. I came here today because I strongly support the new health education guidelines that have been proposed. I want all of my kids to feel safe and supported at school and I really want them and their peers to learn the facts about gender identity and learn that from an evidence-based curriculum like the one that's being proposed. I want them to understand these facts so that my daughter, my kids, and all the kids at school can feel safe and respected. I want all children to have that equal access. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Danny Herit. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Danny Harret. I go by she or they pronouns. I'm transgender and I have transgender kids and non-binary kids in Michigan. We are lucky enough to be in a district that already includes most of these health curriculum proposed standards and I can see firsthand the impact it has on queer people, on my children. They see, they feel seen, heard, they're represented in their education, and they learn about themselves, not just everybody else. And more importantly, everybody learns about them in age-appropriate ways. This stuff impacts people positively. How do I know? Because they come and tell me. I get to help out the school district by teaching some students, teachers, or whatnot, professional development, and they come up and tell me how important this was, how much they have been seen. I really hope you support this education, the standards. It is important for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Sokhunik. I apologize for the pronunciation. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Jeff Sowajak. I am a high school senior at a gifted, talented public school in a part of Moash. I've noticed today there aren't many other high schoolers here today because this meeting was scheduled on a school day. I'm here to express my strong support for the updated Michigan Health Ed standards. Seeing the Michigan Health Ed standards includes content on the definition of gender identity, something that every human being has, gave me a spark of hope for transgender students like myself. Public schools can be unsafe environments for transgender students. When a student feels unsafe, they can't learn. I know this from personal experience. I fully realized that I was a transgender male in sixth grade, but it took me years to feel safe enough to come out because I felt unsupported in school. I felt too unsafe and afraid to be able to reach my full potential. It honestly didn't take much time at all to clear up disinformation about gender identity, but it makes an incredible difference for transgender students like myself. I was very lucky that my health class covered information on gender identity because it allowed me to feel safe enough to come out of my shell and truly begin living and learning. By great sword, I won science fairs and made it to international levels. I presented at international conferences and I discovered my passion for studying medicine and began planning for my dream of becoming a doctor. And to think that really all that it took was a health class instructor that briefly taught about transgender people in an accepting way.
The next five that should be in the holding pattern should be Sarah Antaya, Rachel Hayer, John Groschenbacher, Catherine Bessard, and Kristen Lee. Next person for public comment is Erin Riley. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
The goal of public education has always been and will always be about freedom. Freedom to learn, freedom to ask questions, freedom to grow and to finding one's place in adult society. The proposed changes to the health curriculum towards trans inclusion furthers inclusivity and representation for all children. My niece is a student in Heartland District Schools. She is 10 years old and uses pronouns matching her sex at birth. Trans-inclusive education not only makes schools safer for queer and trans students, it also invites kids like my niece to think about their gender as a spectrum and as something as unique to herself as her personality. Limiting health education to two genders not only ignores the thousands of queer kids in our schools, but also harms cis kids like my niece by robbing her of the opportunity to see her gender as whatever it needs to be, for girl to mean whatever she needs it to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next person is Sterling Bentley. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sterling Bentley. I am a transgender man and a PhD student in the School of Social Work at Michigan State University, where I research and focus on LGBTQ health and well-being. But today I want to talk to you about a young trans person that I met at a nonprofit I used to work for. He was the life of our weekly drop-ins and one of the most creative problem solvers that I've come across. Unfortunately, we lost him six years ago to suicide this month. Queer and trans people rarely see ourselves reflected in the news, in social media, or classroom discussions, which means neither do our peers, which means we are constantly forced to explain and defend ourselves and our humanity. It is exhausting, it is dehumanizing, and it is isolating. All key depressive factors that lead to suicide. The proposed health education standards.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Lori Mayers. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Lori Mayers. I'm a Plymouth resident and president of P Flag Plymouth Canton. I'd like to talk today about the importance of representation when children can see themselves reflected in the subjects they're learning, the books they're reading, and the media they're consuming. Seeing people who look like ourselves contributes to our sense of belonging, which contributes to success at school. That's why the proposed health guidelines before you, which include LGBTQ students for the first time, are necessary. We applaud the guidelines and the changes you have made in them. For middle schoolers, they recommend defining gender expression, gender identity, and sexual orientation. These three concepts are easy to understand, but even if you choose to disregard signs and the testimony of transgender people and their families, we as a government must recognize that trans people have the right to live safely, freely, and without discrimination. Many students know themselves to be LGBTQ. Let's tell them we see them.
Your comment today.
Thank you.
Next is Michelle Mustakis. You may begin your public comment.
Hello, my name is Michelle Mustakis. I'm a 71-year-old grandma, live in Canton, Michigan. And it's been nearly two decades since Michigan State Board of Education has changed their, has looked at their policies. And the world our kids are living in right now is very different, thanks to social media, online access, and greater awareness of identity. As a result, young people are asking for broader, honest, and more relevant information on sexual health and safety. Classes that teach healthy relationships consent digital boundaries and emotional well-being. They want education that acknowledges trauma, reflects their lived experience, and gives them real tools for adulthood. When we don't provide that, the students turn to TikTok or peers who are just as lost as they are. We owe them better. We have the means and the ability to provide medically accurate, age-appropriate, and compassionate instruction led by qualified teachers who can answer questions with care.
Your comment today.
Not judgment.
Is Meta Mendel Reyes? Are you ready, you may begin.
I speak to support the proposed standards. I am a grandmother of a six-year-old in the first grade. I am also a lesbian, so I have personal experience of being treated as different, not as good as, excluded. But I speak to you not only as a grandmother, not only as a lesbian. I speak to you because safety and inclusion of all students are community values. These are the values of my friends and my neighbors. And they matter, not just to our most vulnerable students, they matter to all the students. I don't want my granddaughter to see her classmates bullied and targeted because of who they are. I don't want her to be ashamed of her grandmother because she's learned to hate those who are different. Thank you.
The next five who should be planning for movement over to the boardroom for holding pattern should be Hussein Berry, Audrey Sokyek, Adam Rembrandt, Reebrandt, excuse me, Tim Totten, and Deirdre Shires. Next public commenter is Sarah Antaya. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your comment.
Hello, I'm here today as the parent of two high school students and as a transgender woman. When I came up through school in the late 80s, early 90s, none of this was covered in our health education standards. At the same point, it's probably, possibly, one of the contributing factors to where it took me until my, well into my 40s and to figure out who I truly was and admit that to myself. I can think back to those health education classes that we took back then. And if those topics had been acknowledged, not even necessarily covered in a whole lot of detail, how would my life have been different? How would it have possibly been better? Right? It is so imperative that our students today have this education and this awareness around folks like myself and other diverse identities and sexual orientations.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Rachel Hayer. Is Rachel Hayer on her way? Okay, we'll move. John Groschenbacher? Go ahead and come to the table and whenever you're ready. You may begin.
Since our time's been cut, I'll end my speech and just talk about the petition. Sitting in front of you is a petition of 1,667 parents who have signed, asking you to reject the standards. That's in just 10 days. I hear a lot of people out here talking about groups, superintendents. None of those people matter. You know who matter? The parents and the students. What I care matters. No offense, but what you guys think about teaching my kid transgender, that's not your right. And the law clearly states that. Superintendents, don't care about them, they have a job. All these other groups I hear, they are irrelevant. The only thing that matters is the parents, and unresoundingly, they are against this. I feel for the people out here. But those failures that they experienced were not a lack of education they received, that was a lack of the parents. I shouldn't have to pay that price because their parents failed. No offense, I shouldn't have to have my daughter be exposed to something that I disagree with. with, and that is Omar Wanwulu Lutisirip. You guys have the petitions, and they've all been sent to you. Thank you.
Next is Catherine Bussard. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your public comment.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Catherine Bussard, and I am speaking today in my personal capacity to firmly oppose the proposed standards. I appreciate that there's been some work done to the standards from last month. However, these standards still fall far below the standard of the Michigan Public School Law, the clear meaning of our laws, and they also fail the most basic test of good governance. Before any government body should ask, they should consider, first, do I have the correct power source to authorize the action that I'm taking? And second, does taking that action violate civil rights in any fashion? These proposed standards fail both of those tests. Health and sex education are two different things. I would remind this body, we're not voting on sex ed today. We're voting on health, and those are statutorily different under Michigan law. It's also important to note the threat to civil rights and the issues that have not been resolved, especially for people of Abrahamic faith. I urge you to reject these standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Hayer or Hayes. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
These updates are long overdue, grounded in science and guided by evidence. They include concepts like gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, not as controversial issues but as real and natural parts of being human. This is how we equip students with the knowledge and compassion they'll need to navigate a diverse world with empathy and understanding. Some claim we should be focusing on improving test scores, not on inclusion, but here's the truth. Inclusion is the cornerstone of academic success. Students can't learn if they don't feel safe. When they're valued, they engage, and when they belong, they thrive, not just emotionally, but academically. That's what these standards are about, creating classrooms where every student can show up as themselves, ready to learn, ready to grow, ready to reach their potential. By adopting these standards, you're choosing education over fear, truth over distortion, and compassion over cruelty. Thank you for your leadership, your courage, and your commitment to building schools where every student feels safe to learn, grow, and become exactly who they are meant to be. Because when every student feels safe to be exactly who they are-
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm Kristen Lee from Wayne County and the Michigan Education Director from Citizens Defending Freedom. The Michigan Proposed Standards 2.0 are unfortunately still lipstick on a pig and must be rejected in favor of healthier ones. This board can and must do better. Version 2.0 makes no substantial changes, as seen in the guiding principles that are infused throughout. The parent-child relationship is not upheld or honored as it should be. Controversial material is still woven in, opening doors to curricula and classroom conversations that undermine family values and parental rights, which are a civil right. One example is sexual content. Of sexual content in there is page 44, Healthy Relationships, regarding sexual -- sorry, consent. What is that if not talking about sexual touch and activity with middle schoolers? Additionally, sex ed is like putting art history under world language standards. These are related but separate subjects. The law mandates sex ed-
Thank you for your comment today. The next group that should be in --
Hussein Barry?
I'm sorry?
Hussein Barry.
I'm just going to give the people that are coming into the holding pattern, and then you'll be next. Yep. So the next five that should come to be prepared for public comment, Shirley Schaefer, Matt Spencer, Noah Spencer, Seth Spencer, Carol Ream. Next public commenter, Hussein Barry. Thank you for your patience. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Hussein Barry. For a quarter century, I worked with and served as a trustee with Dearborn Public Schools. What is the best for all students? What is the best for all students was a major factor in every decision that I made for a quarter century. I had a three-minute presentation here to address you, just to kind of say, slow down, talk to more parents, you're losing parents, you're losing students. Dearborn Public Schools lost over 2,000 students just the last few years. We're bleeding students. By the way, you made an illegal vote on a motion that was not supported. It was amended, then it was approved 6-2. That was an illegal motion. I do want to say something here. I am here to ask -- part of what I was going to say. I am here to ask you to put political divides on the side. The zero-sum theory in politics today is not working. It is destroying our society at every level. Obviously, that's not what you wanted to hear. I'm ashamed to call you a former colleague. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Andre Sokjak. I'm sorry for the pronunciation.
That's okay. Afternoon. This is Andre Sukhujak. As a parent of a trans child and a professional scientist, I strongly support the standard. Knowledge is power. Schools are supposed to empower all students. Knowledge is power. The most reliable source of knowledge is science. Not -- so I'm sorry, parents do not know best. Scientists know the best. Experts know the best. So I strongly support the standard and to enable and empower all students to feel safe, educated, knowing who they are, and knowing that it's okay to be who they are. Thank you for attention.
Is coming as a group?
We're coming as a group, yes. We have a resolution signed by 50 pastors. Copy of it's there.
Are all of your names listed?
Three of us will be speaking, but we just have the signature pages.
Who the three people are that are listed, registered.
Pastor Michael Smith, Minister Adam Rebant, Pastor Danny Soria, S-O-R-I-A.
So you will have five minutes as a group.
Okay. Can I just turn this in? This is the signatures, but then there's copy here.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
All right. Thank you very much for extending the time. I really appreciate that. I understand how you had to cut the time of each person, but thank you for extending the overall time. My name is Michael Dennis Smith. I'm the pastor of a church and involved in the community. And first and foremost, I want to say that God loves every one of these kids, regardless of how our perspective is or how we're trying to educate them. Each one is unique and wonderful, beautifully made in the image of God. He made them male and female. He has a plan for each and every one of them, and they're written down in His book. And I pray that we can understand what that is. And I don't know why so much confusion has come in, and now there's 80 different genders, and the kids are confused as to their own identity. And I pray that we can get through that, and the kids can really see who they are, made in the image of God. Our resolution, whereas the Michigan Constitution, Article 1, Section 8, states, "Religion, morality, and the knowledge of being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged, affirming the vital role of moral instruction rooted in faith and family." And whereas, the Michigan Department of Education has proposed new health education standards like Middle School 8.2.SH that would inject subjective gender ideology and fluid definitions of sexual orientation into public school instruction, allowing teaching children to view identity as self-defined rather than God-given, promoting confusion over biological reality and undermining age-appropriate instruction. And whereas, High School 12.6.SH would compel students to identify and support policies promoting all sexual orientations and gender expressions, pressuring minors to advocate for ideologies that may conflict with biblical truth and family values. Whereas, Michigan Compiled Laws, MCL 380.10, clearly affirms that it is natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct that care, teaching, and education of their children. And there's a few more things on this, but we don't have time to get through it, and this is signed by over 40 pastors, backed by all their congregants, so I exceptionally represent hundreds of people. My only comment is that the authority of God oversees us all, and any men and women of God -- I'm a man of God, and this should not pass, and I'd like to ask Pastor Danny Soria to come in and speak for his community as well. Thank you, Pastor Danny, and I'm going to give you two minutes and 27 seconds.
Perfect. And when about when the science is corrupted, right? Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, we stand before here today not representing any political power or any particular religion. I'm a Hispanic pastor, so I speak on behalf of many Hispanic pastors, thousands and millions around the world and here in this great nation. We find ourselves in pivotal times, a critical crossroad. We bear the profound responsibility to make wise and morally sound decisions. Those choices must be guided not by a distorted or perverse moral compass, but by a biblical and constitutional perspective, one that holds the rule of law. Biblical morals should not be viewed merely as religious tenets, but as timeless guidelines for the advancement of humanity and the sustainable development of society. They enable us to thrive and to establish a meaningful legacy for future generations. This responsibility, ladies and gentlemen, does not lie with the government, with institutions, with organizations, and boards such as this one. This responsibility is solely on the parents. You have no right to decide by the parents. You don't live in their homes. You have no knowledge about the emotional maturity and the mental maturity of every children in this country. So you should make decisions, know about the pressures of some groups. You should make decisions by the rule of law and what is common sense, because when the science is corrupted, all the results are going to be corrupted. And then, as people of God, we are here today to formally advise you. The position you hold are once a great privilege. You must not render decisions based on personal opinions, pressures from groups, or agendas, but rather apply common sense to filter out anything morally questionable. Above all, you do not possess the authority to make choices on behalf of parents. You are in no way entitled to these kind of decisions. In these 10 seconds, I have to say this to you. You decide to go against the parents and prerogatives of the children, we will make sure utilizing all available lawful and spiritual tools-
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
Help you account for it.
Please have Tim Totten to come to the table for public comment. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Tim Totten, parent of school-aged children at Grand Ledge. Some sex ed topics and materials have been hidden from me, already being taught as health that can't be opted out of. Our formal sex education advisory board doesn't even exist. Review, opt-out, and local oversight are missed to me. I urge you to vote no on the proposed health standards to avoid great folly and not be swayed by pseudoscience. Radical gender ideology is being pushed by pseudoscience. The problem of fake science has only gotten worse. Peer review has been broken, and standards plummeted for a long time. The real-world results are quite dangerous, the ends of rationality and the radical reduction of the health of the survivors. A vote of yes is more great folly in that great industry of error.
Next is Deirdre Shires. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I'm a parent of two kids in Michigan Public Schools and also a faculty member at MSU. I'm here today to express my strong support for adopting the new standards, and particularly the inclusion of gender identity and sexual orientation. Studies show that most LGBTQ kids in Michigan have been bullied because of their sexual orientation or gender expression, and over 1 in 3 have seriously considered suicide. Yet, when schools include sexual orientation and gender identity in their curriculum in an age-appropriate way, as the new standards recommend, it helps create safer, more welcoming school environments, which has a positive impact on the mental health of LGBTQ youth. As a social scientist, I recently surveyed MSU undergraduate students who graduated from Michigan schools across 59 districts. Nearly 80% of our participants, four out of every five, said they think high schools should teach students about gender identity, including transgender identities. So I strongly urge the board to adopt the new health education standards framework. Our kids deserve accurate, evidence-based, and up-to-date health information that includes sexual orientation and gender identity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next five for holding pattern is Kathy Henderson, Catherine Zetterholm Fisher, Eileen McNeil, Dr. Megan Moss, and Pastor Danny Soria. I apologize. Eileen McNeil. Next public commenter is Shirley Schaefer. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Shirley Schaefer, and I'm a school bus driver. Our public education system must always remain consistent with the fundamental law on which it was founded. The Michigan Constitution, Article 8, Section 1, makes this very clear. Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. If the members of this board wish to remain in good standing with the people, you must reject proposing any curriculum, policy, or program that may conflict with constitutional principles. Subjects that undermine the moral and religious convictions of students and families, whether sex education, gender identity, or any other, must be reexamined in the light of the fundamental law that governs you and that you have sworn to uphold. Members of the board, your oath binds you to these principles.
Thank you for your comment today.
You must ensure that our schools reflect the constitutional-
Thank you for your comment today. Please end your comment.
And moral heritage.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Matt Spencer. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Article 1, Section 4 of the Michigan Constitution says that every person shall be at liberty to worship God according to the dictates of his own conscience. Everything that a government official, obviously including all of you, that you -- anything that you do must be within the constraints of the Constitution. It must be a constitutional grant of authority. In order to overcome the right of every person to be at liberty to worship God according to the dictates of their own conscience, has to come from a constitutional grant of authority. If there is not a constitutional grant of authority in our state constitution, that is an unofficial act by law. Even the Supreme Court has recently mentioned this as early as last year. There is no immunity for unofficial acts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Noah Spencer.
The Michigan Constitution clearly establishes the purpose of public education in Article 8, Section 1, which states, "Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. Public education was never meant to undermine morality or compel beliefs contrary -- excuse me, compel belief systems contrary to conscience. Yet today, this board considers a proposal that directly violates Article 1, Section 4 of the Michigan Constitution, which says every person shall be at liberty to worship God according to the dictates of his own conscience. Any policy proposal or curriculum that infringes upon this liberty, whether through compelled ideology, sexualized instruction, or doctrines repugnant to personal faith, stands an open violation of the Supreme Law of this state. Therefore, I remind each member of this board that the authority to deprive any one of the people of their liberty is found nowhere in the Michigan Constitution, and that you have the lawful duty to ensure that all educational materials and directives are compatible with the constitutional principles of religion, morality, and knowledge."
Thank you. Next is Seth Spencer.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Spencer. I serve the Lady Amit there with notices to pass out to you all. Please take notice that the people, as seen in the Michigan Constitution, have guaranteed rights that no government may interfere with. Michigan Constitution, Article 1, Section 4, excerpt. Every person shall be at liberty to worship God according to the dictates of his own conscience. The power to be at liberty is fundamental and is an inherent, natural right, and there is no constitutional grant of authority to overcome this right. If even one child is taught something that contradicts the internal moral sense of right and wrong, an injury is done and irreparable harm may be done. Michigan Constitution, Article 8, Section 2, excerpt. Every school district shall provide for the education of its pupils without discrimination as to religion, creed, race, color, or national origin. Constitutional rights must not be violated by government, including any of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol Ream. You may begin.
Dear esteemed board members, over 25 years ago, my own daughter, in middle school, was told she would fail health class if she didn't put a condom on a banana. The teacher meant well, but this is exactly the nonsense contrary to family beliefs that entered the classroom when parents have no opt-out. The proposed standards guarantee this will happen again, only now on a much larger mandatory scale. Children deserve education rooted in biology, safety, and respect, not ideology disguised as health. Keep sex ed separate, elective, and fully opt-outable. I urge you to reject these standards today and honor the trust Michigan parents have placed in you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group that should be prepared to come to line is Sandra Tannahill, Naomi Khalil, Thomas Coy, and Louis Miles. Next person for public comment is Kathy Henderson.
I'll leave her last, or can I leave them?
Yes, I'll leave them.
I'll leave.
I'll leave.
Thank you. I apologize.
Thank you, board members. Thank you for listening and hearing. We ask that you do more than just hear us today. We ask you that you not vote on this today. You're taking back a lot of feedback. I'm Eileen McNeil with the Citizens for Traditional Values Organization. We have gotten an enormous amount of feedback from parents across the state, and you are hearing from all those parents across the state, I know, in your emails. I appreciate you reading them. What is the hurry? Why now? Why today? You know, why this? If you really want to address health and the sex ed, then let's take time. Let's, all of us, all our organizations, not just Moash, not just some of the other groups, let's, every parent, I never heard from you about your, you know, do you have some opinions on what we should include on health and sex ed? Sex ed is very defined in the state law, and that's what we should follow. This health document of 100--
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
71 pages. I'm sorry, 71 pages, not 100. Thank you.
Next person is Kathy Henderson. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Kaylee, and I am a Lansing resident educator and PhD candidate at Michigan State University. I am here to express my support for the updates to the Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. I am also here to represent many friends and family in Michigan who could not be here today, but who also wish to express their support for a whole-child approach to health and sex education. The practice that I would like to focus on the importance of today is Practice 6, Advocacy and Health Promotion, more specifically, the discussion of how to foster empathy, inclusivity, and respect around issues related to gender and sexuality, and the identification and support of school and community policies and programs that promote respect for all people of all sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions. This matters because, to quote Ashley L. Sullivan and Lori L. Arro in Voices of Transgender Children in Early Childhood Education, "Many schools do not include transgender youth in their anti-discrimination policies," and quote--
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Catherine Zetterholm Fisher.
Hi, my name is Kathy, and I have three kids. My youngest is in 11th grade. And I saw posts about writing to the State Board of Education, and I thought I didn't need to, because what you were doing was good for the children in Michigan. And then I realized you needed to hear everybody's opinion. One of the changes I applaud is the inclusion of gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, starting in middle school. That's how we develop empathy, being able to understand how other people feel and experience life. Empathy and compassion aren't about agreeing with another person. It just means that you understand where they're coming from and care about them and show them respect. Respect for others, even though they are different from you, is important in our democratic society. Another important addition to the standards is the ability to foster healthy relationships through information on communications and decision-making skills. A third important addition is the emphasis on boundaries and consent. In all, it's a great document. It emphasizes respect for others and gives students--
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name's Dr. Megan Moss, and I'm an associate professor of Human Development and Family Studies at Michigan State University. I'm also the parent of two daughters who attend public school here in Michigan. I was speaking in strong support of the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards, because comprehensive, age-appropriate health education doesn't just protect individual kids, it protects entire communities. In my MSU courses, I hear from students all the time who grew up in Michigan schools and told me, "Parents, teachers, no one taught them about consent, boundaries, or what healthy relationships look like." And that's not because parents don't care. It's because most parents don't know where to start. Data show that less than half of Michigan parents talk to their children about puberty or reproductive health, but that doesn't mean that young people aren't learning about sexuality. They are simply left to learn about relationships and sexuality from TikTok, Netflix, and pornography, sources that are often inaccurate, unrealistic, or even dangerous.
Thank you for your comment today. The next five that should be prepared to be in line are Cheryl Myers, Holly Kimball, Michelle Rich, Gwen Bliss, and Ann Scott. The next person for public comment is Sandra Tannahill. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Mental-sexual persuasion on our kids is causing mental harm and shouldn't be in health school's curriculum. Teaming up with an organization that teaches kindergartners how to masturbate and sexual radical ideology is absurd and disgusting. Let's talk about feeling safe. My daughter doesn't feel safe sharing a bathroom or a locker room with a male. No teacher, board, or school district will be able to manage these sex ed applications in all aspects of curriculum effectively without oversight and failure. I oppose these guidelines due to your obvious incompetence to make right decisions in all aspects of education. Statistics don't lie. You sat through hours of valid moral and legal concerns from opposing parents and legislators, yet you didn't listen. You're failing us. Health and sex education should be separate.
Thank you. Next is Naomi Khalil.
Hello, my name is Naomi Khalil, and I'm here to strongly support the health standards that are before you. As a former educator and administrator in both Detroit Public Schools Community District and Farmington Public Schools, who oversaw health and sex ed in addition to civil rights for students, it is imperative that we have standards that not only educate comprehensively, but that protect the safety of all of our students. The biggest detriment to our democracy and to our society falling down is ignorance. So it's better to be fully informed of all that is out there and have all of our students be fully informed of all that is out there than to bury our heads in the sand because you're not comfortable or you're not in support. Everyone has their religious rights. Religious rights are to be practiced at home, and make sure that our public schools are safe for all students, for all identities, and from all walks of life.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Coy. You may begin.
My name is Tom Coy. I live in LaPire County. I have a Master's of Liberal Studies in American Culture at the University of Michigan. My thesis delved into the history of the LGBTQ movement. I oppose the new guidelines on sexual orientation, and especially putting the sex ed in the required health education. Michigan citizens are divided between two dominant views of sexual morality. One is based on the Bible, while the second is based on progressive ideology heavily influenced by the LGBT political movement. From my studies, the progressive view of sexuality in Michigan's sex ed curriculum regarding gender identity, sexual activity, and gender and sexual orientation, they're not based on science, but on LGBTQ ideology that actually promotes bigotry against its opponents who believe in biblical morality. I challenge each of you to examine your own bias, and I ask you to stop indoctrinating our children in LGBTQ sexual ideology. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. There once was a rule of thumb in politics. One handwritten letter from a constituent was considered worth 1,000 votes, so let's apply that same logic today. How many emails has this board received on these proposed standards? How many public comments were made at the last meeting? And if a petition were circulated with, say, 500 signatures under that same rule, that would represent half a million voices in opposition. That tells me this isn't really about updating old curriculum or doing what's best for students. It's about advancing an agenda, an ideology, that does not belong in public education. There are many people who believe in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that He died to forgive our sins. So can we teach that belief in school as well? No, because religion, you say, is a belief, not a fact, and has no place in the classroom. Then by your own logic, neither do these gender and ideology lessons. Now, I've heard some say there's still an opt-out option, but as the second bullet point on Page 4 clearly states, these competencies will apply across the school curriculum and can be integrated into any area of content.
Thank you for your comment today. The next five that should prepare for coming to the line is Danny Jones, Patrick Cox, Susan Estep, Viva Rosenfeld, and Jenny Macy. Next for public comment is Cheryl Miles. Next. You'll be after, so it'll be Cheryl Miles, then Holly, then Michelle. Begin.
Children's minds are still growing. The part of their brain that helps them think clearly, control impulses, and tell them right from wrong doesn't fully develop until their mid-20s. When kids are exposed to sexual topics too early, they're being asked to carry adult knowledge without adult understanding. That confusion can lead to anxiety, depression, and a lost sense of identity. The standards claim that the gender diverse students are at risk because of discrimination and stigma. That ignores the basic truth. All children are emotionally and mentally vulnerable. Brains are still developing the areas that guide judgment, emotion, and self-control. When sexuality and gender identity are introduced too early, it overloads young minds that aren't ready to process these ideas in a healthy way. Tons of research shows early exposure leads to higher rates of anxiety, depression, poor body image, and confusion. This adds pressure, fuels self-doubt, and drives a wedge between children and their parents. These harms don't come from stigma, they come from pushing kids too far, too fast.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Holly Kimball. Ready, you may begin.
Hi, I'm Holly Kimball. Thank you for listening today. I appreciate your daily concern and work for the best interests of the children of our state. All men and women are created in God's image, and therefore, all men are valuable and deserve respect. Our Creator made us, therefore, He is the authority on health education. Although He loves us, He does not approve of our stinking thinking. Divorcing gender from biology is dangerous nonsense and not safe for children. The State Board of Education is using its elected position wrongfully by not upholding citizens' rights. A move towards state-controlled teaching of radical gender ideology in health class robs parents of their rights, according to state law. The proposed health standards support the dangerous nonsense of radical gender ideology. It's a misuse of delegated authority.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Michelle Rich. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your public comment.
Hello, I am Michelle Rich, and I thank you for having this opportunity to come and speak to you on this health proposal. And I strongly oppose this proposal. To my surprise, it was only a month ago that I was aware of this proposal, when it was 40 pages long. I just found out yesterday that it increased to 70 pages long. There is so much in this health proposal that I oppose or do not agree with, that I don't have time to present it today. But you are not a legislative body. You are the Board of Education, and there's already laws already in order, according to the MCL 3, 801507.
For your comment today. Your position-- Thank you for your comment today. You're all done. Your minute has expired. Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
Well, I strongly advise that--
Thank you. Next is Gwen Bliss.
--look at the laws and position--
Please don't take the time of somebody else.
All right. I hope that you will give more people time--
Your time for public comment?
Please don't take the time of someone else.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin your comment.
My name is Gwen Bliss. My background is in special education, reading specialty, and I'm also a precinct delegate in Livingston County. I have over 20 years' experience working with children, and as a part of that role, it was also my job to do background checks and to make sure that everyone had training to reduce the risk of children being abused or molested. And I have to tell you, intentionally exposing a child to sexually explicit content while undermining the authority of a parent is considered grooming behavior by a predator. Furthermore, concerning the LGBT awareness component, I believe in science and evidence-based as well. Any professional working with children should know it is normal childhood development for kids ages approximately 7 to 13 to go through a stage where boys think girls are yucky and girls think boys have cooties. Any school staff member who counsels a student this age if the reason they feel this way is because they are trans or homosexual causes a child to think there is something wrong with them, making such presumptuous causes, presumptions, causes confusion, anxiety, and depression. Students troubled by their changing bodies should instead be reassured there's nothing wrong with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, my, come on. The next group that should plan to come to the line is Charlene Tavarosi, Cheryl Picard, Ron Picard, Wendy Sellers, Mary Jo Ebert, and Mary Bino. The next person for public comment today is Danny Jones. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay. So thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you here today. I really appreciate it. I'm Danny Jones. I'm the parent of a teenager who's in a Michigan public school, and I'm speaking in support of the proposed changes that have been brought forward today. What I'd like to say is that my kid can handle learning about reality. And we're talking about here the reality of the existence of LGBTQ plus people and families, including transgender people. LGBTQ, well, it's a mouthful sometimes. LGBTQ plus people are just that, people. People who fall in love, people who pursue careers, people who sit in long board meetings, like we're doing now, all very normal human things. I have many LGBTQ people in my family, myself included, and we deserve to be included and represented. And by the way, just to end, parents of queer kids and those kids have rights as well when we're talking about the question of rights. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ann Scott, I'm very sorry that I skipped over. Thank you. Please come to the table for your public comment. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Ann Scott. I am a parent. I have also served on my district's Sex Education Advisory Board, and I am here in full support of the updated health education standards as proposed, including comprehensive sexual and reproductive health, HIV prevention, and sexual orientation and gender identity. As parents, we all do our best, but our kids are swimming in a soup of information on the internet. Influencers and pornography are ready to step in and fill in the gaps. Our schools and our highly qualified and competent educators are reliable, trusted sources of factual, accurate, and comprehensive information. Our districts need strong, accurate, comprehensive standards to guide the local decision-making in recognition and respect for the existence of our diverse students and families, and to promote dignity and respect for all people, regardless-- regardless of whether who they are aligns with your worldview. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Cox. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I'm a retired fire medic, was in the military. Me and my wife had our son when we were 40. And I didn't need to... He didn't need to come out to me because I had a great relationship with him. So I knew that he was gay. And when he came out as transgender at age 18, again, we accepted him with open arms and everything was great. That's why I support this bill. He didn't have the education for that. And he's in therapy right now because of all the bullying, all the homophobic slurs all his friends said when he was all the way from kindergarten up through school. And he was worried about hate and things that would happen to him physically and emotionally and mentally. And that's why he's in therapy. I think this is an amazing thing. Once I read it, I thought it was amazing. And I support it 100%. And I thank you for bringing this forth and going forward with it. Just first step in a long road ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Estep. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, my name is Susan Estep. I fully support the revised health education standards. The current standards are 18 years old. That's a shame. For six years, I served as board trustee personally in area schools. During that time, I was a rep on the Sex Ed Advisory Board, which I called CEP. Parents make up half of CEP. Surveys are given to staff, parents, and students. They review state and national standards and data. And public hearings are held. Parents can opt out. I am a queer woman. My wife and I have three children attending public schools. They have family and friends who are LGBTQ. I want to make sure that everyone hears this. I have parental rights, too. My children also have rights, rights to talk about their two moms. Guess what? They do it in elementary school. They have, just as any child can talk about their parents, children, sorry, rights to hear books in class from their moms and rights to wear pride shirts.
Thank you for your comment today.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Viva Rosenfeld. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Adrienne Rich once wrote, "When someone with the authority of a teacher describes the world and you are not in it, it's as if you looked in the mirror and saw nothing." I'm a parent of three children who've attended Michigan public schools, two of whom are part of the LGBTQ+ community. In our old school district, the message to them was clear. You don't belong here. They became anxious and withdrawn. It was heartbreaking. We moved to a more inclusive district, one that taught acceptance. Within weeks, my kids were happier, making friends, and thriving because they finally felt seen. That's how inclusive education does it. It saves, it heals, it gives hope. Please vote to approve the new Michigan Health Education Standards Framework because every child deserves to see themselves in their school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jenny Macy. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I am Jenny Macy, a parent of adult children who attended the Novi Michigan schools, and I support the Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. When I was a young girl, about five years old, I remember my parents, in preparation for a going-away party for a good friend of theirs, sat me down and told me, "Some boys like girls, some girls like boys, some boys like boys, and some girls like girls." Seeing people hold hands or kiss is normal and fine, no matter who they are kissing. It is not a big deal. Their friend was gay, and they wanted me to know that it is just fine to love whoever you love. It was simple and clear, love is love. This has stuck with me all of my life. People all just want to love who they love without judgment. I am here today because I want to see that level of acceptance and kindness for all the kids in our state. I appreciate your support of LGBTQIA+ people and their rights. I encourage you to include discussions of all lifestyles in our schools. Students need a place where they are accepted and know that the feelings they feel are okay.
For your comment today.
Thank you.
Group that will come to the line to wait is John Cashner, Thomas Coy, Julia Pulver, Shannon Keckow, and Alicia Childers. Next public commenter is Charlene Taverozy. May I begin?
Good afternoon. I'm speaking for Joan Pence, coordinator of the Western Wayne Indivisible. I taught every level of biology ever offered in Plymouth Canton schools over my 38-year career, and I am certified by the State of Michigan to teach reproductive health. As the State of Michigan ponders new guidelines to districts on this subject, I want to share with what I learned over those many years. In some ways, the students know nothing about the reproductive functioning, i.e., witness the panicked questions beginning with the words, "Can I get pregnant if?" And in other ways, they know everything. That everything often involves what kids know in their hearts from a remarkably early age but rarely speak of to the adults in their lives. That thing is gender. It is for that reason that I believe that they understand and accept their gender, nonconforming peers, far better than we often do. So if we choose to teach these kids about LGBTQ...
For your comment today. Thank you. Next is Cheryl Picard. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Cheryl Picard, and I'm from Plymouth Canton. And I presently serve on the Plymouth Canton School Board, but I am speaking for myself. I'm bringing up the topic of trust, trusted adults, in relation to this health standards. I would ask, how is that determined? We tell the kids, "Oh, trusted adult." I see that listed everywhere. But I would ask, like, can we trust the board? Because when they made their... Their, back in 2016, their State Board of Education Statement and Guidance on Safe and Supportive Learning Environments for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Questioning Students, they also have... They put in there that when students have not come out to their parents, a disclosure to parents should be carefully considered on a case-by-case basis. So who's in charge then? Is it the parents? Is it the schools? Like, who gets to decide that? So they know better than the parents? If there is a problem, they're supposed to be reporters. They're supposed to report if there's a...
For your comment today.
Thank you.
Next is Ron Picard. May I begin?
Hi, Ron Picard, also from Plymouth. Just to piggyback on what Cheryl just said. Before COVID, our district passed a similar policy that spelled out when teachers should lie to parents or not. And since then, we've had a... I mean, our enrollment has been dropping. We've had 400-plus out-of-district students come into our district this year, and our enrollment is still going down. And that's because, basically because of trust. When the parents cannot trust the school district anymore, they're going to leave. They're not just going to opt out of the health program or the sex ed program. They're going to leave with their feet. So you can blame COVID, you can blame Trump, you can blame Christopher Columbus about the enrollment going down. But the fact is, it's... Talk to the parents who are leaving. Talk to the ones who have taken their kids to private schools. Every private school in our district has a waiting list. And yet, the public schools enrollment is still going down. And it's because of things like this. So I ask that you not pass this.
Thank you for your comment today. Wendy Sellers. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name's Wendy Sellers, and I have worked with public schools for 40 years. I was a regional school health coordinator working with schools in Ayman and Clinton County, promoting health education across that region. I've also trained thousands of teachers nationally how to teach sex education. I'm a registered nurse and a certified sexuality educator. I'm also a grandparent of 10. And I fully support the adoption of these standards. I also fully support the right of parents to opt their children out of any parts of the sex ed standards that they don't feel are appropriate for their family. This right has always been in Michigan law. I've been doing this 40 years, remember? And it continues to be there, regardless of what's been said. I do not support the dissecting and censoring of the standards to appease those who think they have a right to dictate what is best for everyone else. Do not reduce the standards to the lowest common denominator in an attempt to appease them. They will just demand more. Unfortunately, the health ed standards... Thank you.
Next is Mary Jo Ebert. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon. I serve as Director of the Michigan Unitarian Universalist Social Justice Network. We are a religious organization. On behalf of our member churches, I speak today in support of the proposed Michigan Health Standards Framework. For over 25 years, our congregations have run a life-affirming education program, Our Whole Lives, which teaches about human development, understanding consent and healthy relationships, and sexual health, because this is not taught in the public schools. We recognize the profound impact that comprehensive health education has on improving health and well-being of children, youth, and adults. The proposed framework does give parents agency. They have access to the curriculum. And most importantly, they can supplement the curriculum by discussing with their child their values and their parental guidance. In our experience, parents often welcome this kind of partnership because they don't always feel equipped to do it themselves. We want all children to have knowledge and skills making hard decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Bino. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Mary Bino. I'm a retired regional school health coordinator serving Livingston and Washtenaw County school districts. I am here to express my support to adopt the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Guidelines. Yay, long overdue. We, what we deem in 2025 and beyond, are these guidelines as described in the document that you all have read for today. Me, you, we, us, make health choices every minute of the day, from the time you wake up until the time you go to bed. Choices that can help or hinder us physically, emotionally, or mentally. These choices impact us individually as well as members of our community. Be the educational leaders that you are to provide the best to the best. Our youth deserve exemplary health education.
For your comment today. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next five that should prepare to be in line are Erica Liken, Billy Schultz, Brittany Housman, Natasha Ortega, Dawn Walton. The next person for public comment today is John Cashner.
My name is John Cashner. I am a pastor in Lyons, Michigan. And I'm here to give my strong opposition to the proposed health standards. Michigan law states it's natural, it's the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. The current health standard proposals tend to blur the lines of adhering to current Michigan law and protecting parental rights in the education of their children. The proposed health standards add many categories that are woven into the curriculum, including sexual health, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, abstinence, and other controversial topics. Will this be considered mandatory, required for graduation? Parents need to receive notice of this type of sexual teaching as planned so they can opt their children out. I'm a pastor, as I said before. On a weekly basis, I'm in contact with children and teens in Laoin County. I don't need to tell you this, but I'm sure you all know well to be true, but our children are already over-sexualized and misled. Instead of being told that God made them with purpose and love, at birth, society tells them they can be animal or any other gender. Instead of telling them the life and truth of humanity...
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Next is Thomas Coy. Thomas Coy. Julia Pulver. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Julia Pulver, and I live in West Bloomfield, Michigan. I am the parent of three current high school students, including a trans high school student. I am also a registered nurse and have been for the last 20 years. I strongly support the new standards that are being proposed. All of our students deserve to have accurate information about their own bodies, lives, and experiences presented to them in school in a responsible and age-appropriate manner. And when I say "all of them," I mean all of them, including LGBTQ+ students. No matter what anyone thinks about them, these students exist and have a right to an education that includes them. Their existence and basic dignity should never be up for debate. Statistically, 1 in 10 of students identifies as LGBTQ+. So in a classroom of 30 students, that's roughly three. And those three have the same right to an education that includes them as the other 27. Please do not erase them from their own education.
Your comment. Next is Shannon Keckow. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. I'm here to reject the proposed revised health education standard guidelines and protect all Michigan kids. These actions violate and threaten to erode the constitutional boundary between the state authority and parental autonomy in the Commonwealth. You cannot overreach this oversight legislative authority by ignoring statutory limits. This is exploiting the children. Today, kids are subjected to personality quiz, self-reflection, prompts, and empathy exercises. There is no escape. This proposal is turbocharged SEL. Learning is not therapy. You're treating reading failure with therapy instead of teaching kids to read. Parents do not expect to be probed... We don't want you to probe our minds of our children and shape their worldviews. Nor teachers should be expected to act as therapists or spiritual gurus. Parents see through the rhetoric, the fog of whole-child education.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Alicia Childers. Alicia Childers. Thank you. The next group to be in line, Jose Rodriguez, Sheila Kohun, Stella Shenanekwet, Rick Furkel, and Mike Enstrom. The next person for public comment at this time, Erica Liken. Okay. Billy Schultz. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I have a few questions for this board. First, have you watched the videos or reviewed the handouts that will be given to our students under the new health standards? If not, how can you properly vote yes or no on something that you have not fully reviewed? And if you took the lesson plans to parents and went knocking on doors in your own community, what would they say? I know in Wayne County, I live off of Outer Drive and Fort Street, and I will tell you, if you go door-knocking off of Schaefer and Outer Drive in that neighborhood on Electric Street, they would tell you they would not vote for this. These new health standards normalize sexual content that opened the door for predators. Since 1914, there have been over 780 teachers and staff
Thank you for your comment today.
that have been convicted of...
Comment today. Next person in the room is Brittany Housman. Are you all coming as a group? And can I ask how many have registered so that I can check names off? Can I just have names so that I can check them off? Horstman? Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Whenever you're ready, you will have five minutes. So whenever you're ready to begin, you may.
My name is Brittany Housman. I am a nationally credentialed sexual risk avoidance instructor and director of education. I am a nationally credentialed sexual risk avoidance instructor and director of education. I serve as the vice chair of the Michigan Sexual Risk Avoidance Council, and most importantly, I'm a parent within our public schools. Together with my colleagues, we deliver sex education instruction to more than 19,000 students in the state of Michigan. I would like to address the accusation that groups like ours have spread falsehoods regarding the proposed health standards. The way that I'd like to do that is to detail for you that I have seen how controversial subjects like sexual orientation, gender identity, and similar topics have, in fact, been delivered through content areas that are not health class or sex education. In the district where I live, parents had no idea that sexual orientation and gender identity were common topics within the Trail's social-emotional learning curriculum. We received a lovely letter during the first year our district was piloting the program that described a wonderful curriculum that would teach our children respect, empathy, responsibility, et cetera. There was no mention of anything controversial like gender. It wasn't until a student alerted their parents via text messages of an identity worksheet that was handed out where they were asked to disclose private information, like their sexual orientation and gender identity, that parents became aware. This promoted the formation of an SEL committee, which I joined. I was shocked when I had the opportunity to reveal the curriculum in full, which is when I learned that the curriculum was full of DEI initiatives, including the sexual orientation and gender identity topics that I have mentioned. Parents had no idea, and the district made no effort to inform parents or offer an opt-out solution. Not that there would have been even possibility in that, because SEL occurred in several areas throughout the school day in my son's building, for example. How do you opt out of SEL when it takes place in the morning announcements with specials, teachers, homeroom teachers, et cetera? Dr. Pugh, this is not a falsehood. This is something I witnessed with my own eyes and actively took position to oppose. As you mentioned, the opt-out still being protected, I want to ask you who will enforce the laws protecting the SEAB. MDE is currently charged with this. Who specifically makes sure the laws are being followed? As an educator, I appreciate the fact that Michigan state law promotes standards that encourage students to pursue optimal health. Our law reflects CDC standards that... I'm sorry, research that abstinence is the only 100% effective method to avoiding both the risk of teen pregnancy and STDs. We also see in CDC's data that only 24.4% of Michigan high school students are actually having sex, which means that the majority of students are choosing to avoid the risks of sex entirely, and we can see this reflected in the A- through K law of our state. Which the law... Sorry, while the law allows forementioned of risk reduction strategies, which we agree are important to address, the state of Michigan requires sex education programs to supply age-appropriate content and accurately share that abstinence is the only 100% way to avoid risk. Michigan legislation Section 380.1507B1 states that sex education in schools shall emphasize that abstinence from sex is a positive lifestyle for unmarried young people, because abstinence is the only protection that is 100% effective. I appreciate that the new draft of the guidelines mentions abstinence more frequently than the previous draft. Still, there is no statement within the current draft that states explicitly that abstinence is the only 100% effective method. Generally, when abstinence is mentioned, it is listed in equivalence among delay and contraception. If the point of this proposed framework is to build upon the laws of the state of Michigan as it is stated in the introduction, then why is omitting such a key point of the law? Why is it omitting such a key point of the law? I also question whether these new guidelines abide by Michigan legislation Section 380.1507B that schools, material, and instruction is in sex education that discusses sex shall be age-appropriate. This is something that all parents in school districts strive for in sex education. The debate, however, becomes what is considered age-appropriate. I ask, is something age-appropriate if it encourages students under the age of 16 that teen sex relationships are normal and healthy? I don't believe it is. The middle school standards list contraception and barrier methods as ways to support healthy sexual behaviors. Yet, can a middle schooler have a healthy sexual relationship using contraception if it is illegal for them to consent to sex? As we opened today's meeting hearing about wonderful schools and teachers who are impacting young lives, I want to ask you why you continue to add more confusion and tension in the teaching field. While I was in the Capitol Building a couple of weeks ago, conversations were had regarding our teacher shortage. All of this confusion and controversy certainly isn't attracting more teachers to join the field. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment today. Next in the room is Natasha Ortega. Is Natasha Ortega there? Yeah, thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. So as a mom of four, high school, middle school, elementary, one in the womb, because in the womb, that is a baby. I don't believe in abortion. All lives matter. The root of everything that everyone is looking for, the same kindness, acceptance, that's found in Jesus Christ and Christ alone. So whether you believe that or not, it's real, it's fact. Real love tells the truth. So I hear a lot of scientists speaking today. I guess you forgot there's X, X, Y chromosomes. So when I have this baby, guess what? It can only be male or female. So we've been talking about looking like ourselves. So if a baby is born as a girl, guess what? If we have this baby look like a girl, this baby is feminine, right? Just like a boy. Real love tells us truth. We talk about safe adults. Safe adults do not lie to children. We don't tell them, "Oh, you could be a boy." You can't. That will never happen. Whatever you cut off, it won't work. And we're talking about Chloe Cole. She was groomed at a young age, detransition. She thanks parents like me for speaking out. Help these children. Don't do this.
For your comment today. Next is Dawn Walton.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I'm Dawn Walton, and my pronouns are she/her. I am the president of PFLAG Detroit, and I come here on behalf of Michigan PFLAG chapters. We are, of course, parents, family members, friends, and allies, and members of the LGBTQ+ community. We, of course, support the updates for all the reasons that the other supporters are. I am a parent of a queer child. You have heard parents speak today that do not represent my opinion of these updates. I support them wholeheartedly. My child came out, fortunately, in a public school that was inclusive and supporting, but not every child has that. We are losing children in Michigan communities. We're losing them to bullying, gun violence, and suicide. Education promotes understanding, which leads to compassion, empathy, and kindness to other human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group to be prepared to wait are Jill Delil, Reema Mohamed, Peter Torque, Anne Henrickson, Alan Seles. The first speaker... Or the next speaker is Jose Rodriguez.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Jose Rodriguez. I'm a grandfather and also a pastor at New Wine Church, and I'm just wanted to share my concerns that we all know that the word of God tells us that we are all children of God, and God loves every one of us. And I believe that one of the things that we need to really consider is that God's laws have always been true. We might want to change them, we might try to make them to fit our concerns, but God's laws are always right. And I would just ask you to consider that health education and sex education should be separate. It doesn't need to be combined, and parents need to be able to have the option to opt out. And I truly believe that this board has a concern for children. God loves children, and they are special to Him. And as you, as the board, I think you need to really consider the children, you need to consider the parents, and also understand that the parents have a right to raise their children.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Next is Sheila Kohun. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Board members, you keep spreading misinformation in videos, and in statements, and in your health standards. The Elliot Larson law is based on discrimination. It doesn't mean that we need to teach kids gender identity. So let me be clear in saying that you don't need to teach kids gender identity because of the Elliot Larson law. It's based on discrimination. I got bullied. I got bullied and threatened in school. So it isn't about gender at all. It's about people and how they treat others. Has nothing to do with gender, has nothing to do with sex. It's about bullying people that are different, right? And we all just need to treat each other good. Gender is a religion, and that lady was right. We need to keep the gender ideology, religion, at home and let the parents teach that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Stella Shenanekwet. Stella?
Thank you.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I hope I have everybody's full attention, since I have a four-hour round trip traveling to get a day off work, sir. Thank you. So the one-minute vote's made aside, I don't have time for pleasantries. Let me get right to it. I'm the parent of three. One of them is a transgender boy. He's 24 now. I started grooming him. I mean, he came out to me when he was 14. I guess it wasn't a phase. I support these standards. I was here in 2016, and the vote was for the LGBTQ guidelines. They passed. I'm not sure why we're here again with the same topic. It seems that the same closed minds are here, and let's be blunt, we know what this is about. Deniers lost the bathroom more, so here we are again with it wearing a different dress. Nobody's teaching your kids gender identity. They already know. They're just too scared to tell you about it. Bottom line is, you don't have to believe in it, you don't have to accept it, but it exists. Adolescence is hard enough without trans 14-year-old boys getting pregnant because nobody taught them they could.
Your comment today. Next is Rick Furkel.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Rick Furkel. I'm a professor and the health and physical education director at Central Michigan University. And I was coming... Wanted to talk about a couple different things. I'm recommending that you please vote these down. Right now, there's 128 objectives in the middle school. There's 122 in the high school. And really, when you look across the state, we get about one semester in middle school, one more semester in high school. The feasibility for your teachers to be able to accomplish this is not real. Right now, over 60% of teens' diets are highly processed foods. Sleep is 80% not... They don't get 80%... 80% of teens do not get enough sleep. 75% to 80% do not meet PA guidelines. As far as screen, five to seven and a half hours of teens are recreational every day. That's roughly a third of the year. When you look at this, the middle school standards, nutrition 4.7, physical activity 3.9, no sleep, substance 7.8, tech 6.3. 22% of the objectives are on those areas, but it affects us every single day. High school, nutrition 9.8, PA 8.2, substance 9, tech 5.7, 32.7% on stuff that affects every one of us every single day for the rest of our lives. We have to evaluate that. Thank you.
Next up, Mike Enstrom.
You may begin.
Hi, my name is Mike, and I'm a transgender man and a high school freshman. I believe that it is important for everyone to be represented and included, especially with something as vulnerable as sexual well-being. During my sex ed classes, I would always feel alienated because they never discussed queer people like me. I only learned how a woman and a man could have safe sex, never two people of the same sex. LGBTQ+ inclusive sex ed would not only help queer people feel seen and supported, it would also teach them how to be safe about sex. I urge you to support the usage of a more inclusive sexual education program so that all students can be safer, feel more included, and it would help reduce stigma surrounding the LGBTQ+ community. Thank you.
Five to come to line to wait are Rick Joseph, Heather Lowry, Teri Leduke, Brent Hale, and Ahmed Amir. The next person for public comment is Jill Delil. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
I'd like everybody to just take a cleansing breath here, because you have heard a lot of people say a lot of things. So I'm gonna... Okay. I am Jill Delin, and I was the supervisor of reproductive health for Okemos Public Schools for over 20 years. I am a registered nurse and am a health educator. What I'm going to do is tell you how school districts may or may not put new standards into practice. Our goal in Okemos has always been to meet the needs of students and parents in our community. The new standards will help keep students safe. The revised standards address the needs of all students. LGBTQ parents and students, parents and students, are a vital part of our community, and we strive to keep the learning environment and culture of our schools safe and inclusive. We also include special education students, because these students are most likely to be sexually victimized, and the new standards will address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reema Mohamed.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Reema Mohamed. I am an Ann Arbor Public School Board member. I'm also clinician and researcher. Today, I want to speak in support of aligning our state health standards with the updated Michigan Health Standards Framework, including comprehensive, inclusive education that recognizes and supports our LGBTQ students. Research shows that inclusive health education leads to lower rates of bullying, higher levels of student safety, and better mental health outcomes. In contrast, when students feel invisible and stigmatized, we are higher... We see higher rates of depression, absenteeism, and even suicide risk. That is not acceptable in our schools. In Ann Arbor, we are already doing this, and we are seeing positive results, and all students feel supported. So I urge the Board of Ed, all local school board members in our community, to support adopt... Support adopting the full Michigan Health Education Standards, including LGBTQ-inclusive content. Let's lead with courage and compassion. Thank you.
Peter Torque.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Peter Torque, and I have a trans son who is now a senior at Dexter High School. He spoke to this board when he was in third grade. None of this is new. In Dexter and across Michigan, educators have received training on how to create safe learning environments for LGBTQ students and report better outcomes for all students. I've listened to the comments here and by lawmakers who oppose the new standards. They often use words like "facts" and "evidence," and then proceed to justify their opposition to gender identity based on religious beliefs. That's because if this was about weighing evidence, the professional consensus is overwhelming. Every major medical and mental health organization and every major educational organization support gender and LGBTQ affirmative care and education. Respectfully, your religious ideologies do not give you the right to deny evidence-based best practices. Public education is based on critical thinking.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Anne Henrickson. Anne?
Whenever you're seated and ready, you may begin.
This term "pre-existing condition" is the undergirding rationale in the design of your proposed sex health standards for 2 million children in Michigan. The emphasis on presenting a child K through 12 in all academic areas is spurned from sexual orientation in all forms as a human pre-existing condition. Some say that born that way. Another may say it is not what you do, but it is what you are. As you would say, my characterization of your sex health standard is misinformed. Your determination to include sex content to this degree is obvious, to convert students. Sexual orientation is a methodical sexual conditioning, as in attractive to human innocent and curious minds. It is a psychological programming, and it's called science, as when I was here before.
Thank you. Next is Alan Seles.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, thanks. What I feel is that parents, you know, they send their children to school, you know, then they're told that this gender curriculum can go all the way down to kindergarten, and then they're scared to death. And then they think, well, is this, you know, is the school trustworthy? Are they going to indoctrinate my child? And the question that I have is, why are you trying to push so many kids out of the public school? And why are you trying to push so many young families out of the state because they don't feel like they... feel like they can trust the school or the state with their very own children? So I oppose the changes. Thanks.
Thank you. Tracy Edmund, Gay Long, Sharon Williams, Jonathan Gold, Jennifer Oster, Robert Downey. Next in the room to provide comment, Rick Joseph. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rick Joseph. I am the 2016 Michigan Teacher of the Year. Health education for all students, especially our most marginalized, is foundational to the well-being of our children. Before anyone can learn the three Rs, they need to feel safe. Guidelines are not laws or rules. No one is telling anyone what they must do. Instead, they say, hey, this is what people who study these issues know works best for students. We are all charged to serve. Parents will always have the opportunity to opt their children out of health education, though very few do so because they trust us as educators implicitly. When such topics as gender identity are presented in a way that is developmentally appropriate, children experience lower rates of bullying and suicide. What my upper elementary students have told me, when I acknowledge that they are trans and non-binary, is thank you.
Comment today. Thank you.
Thanks for noticing me. Thanks, everyone.
Heather Lowry. Heath, I am so sorry. You may begin.
Hello, everyone. I'm here today in a twofold capacity. First, as a parent of a young daughter who will be entering the public schools of Michigan at some point, and as the public policy attorney for the Michigan Coalition to end domestic and sexual violence. I'm here to strongly support these new standards. I commend you all for creating a comprehensive, evidence-based, and age-appropriate standard that prioritizes critical areas. These components are essential for equipping students with knowledge and skills to make informed decisions, foster respect for themselves and others, and thrive in a safe and supportive environment. The framework emphasizes root causes of behaviors, risks and protection factors, and social determinants of health, and these align with best practices and national standards. By addressing attitudes, values, and beliefs, they empower students to critically examine personal choices and societal influences. These, this approach is particularly important for preventing domestic violence.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Next is Teri Laduke. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Teri. There's a lot of opinion shared today, both for and against. The problem is, opinions should not be taught as a curriculum. Facts should be. The fact is, a biological man, biological male, is male his whole entire life. Biological female is female their entire life. Doesn't matter how many drugs you give them, how many surgeries, put them in a dress, put them in work boots, whatever. Doesn't matter. Their sex does not change. The opinions expressed in this format here have been very different, but the essential thing is, some of you have a problem with parents and students opting out of the curriculum that indoctrinates children. Parents should have that right. Students should have that right. It should not be merged into the general curriculum of the school.
Thank you for your comment. Brent Hale. Okay. Ahmed Amir. Begin.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of State Representative Emily DeVendorf. Too often, these debates feel like déjà vu. Adults arguing over whether teaching facts is dangerous while kids just want to learn about themselves and the world. The Michigan Health Education Standards aren't controversial because they harm students. They're controversial because they include all of them. Every child deserves lessons grounded in science and acceptance, not fear. Pretending LGBTQ+ students don't exist doesn't protect them. It isolates them. These standards don't push an agenda. They provide accurate, age-appropriate information so students can make safe, informed choices. Parents still have every right to review or opt out of lessons, but our schools have a duty to tell the truth and teach respect. Inclusive education saves lives. Let's stay rooted in evidence, not fear, and move forward with courage, compassion, and honesty for every Michigan student. Thank you.
Next is Edmund. Tracy Edmund. Gay Long. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. I am an 86-year-old great-grandmother of about 23 children. About half of them are in Michigan schools, and a number of them have been homeschooled because they did not trust what was going on in the schools, and the gender identity was one of the problems. I remember learning in school years ago that Thomas Jefferson ordered Congress to print Bibles to be the primary textbook in the schools. When I grew up, the Bible was part of it. Days began with prayer, and the Ten Commandments were posted on the wall. And our rate of learning, our math skills, our science, all our skills were very high. At this point, unfortunately, Michigan has one of the lowest rates of education for reading and math.
Comment today. Thank you. Next is Sharon Williams. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate you being here today and allowing me to speak. My name is Sharon Williams. I live in South Lyon. I am an educator, taxpayer, and a parent. And I've taught from preschool to college level, and I have a master's degree in health education. And I am here to voice my opposition to the proposed changes in the health education curriculum. It breaks, it undermines the beliefs and the values of most in our communities. Number two, additionally, this proposal promotes gender confusion. It is especially true for pubescent teens. Additionally, children's brains are not fully developed until they're in their 20s, so why would you want to confuse them? I think we're stealing their innocence. I was looking at Sexual Health 8.5, where it says that, something about determining the emotional readiness for sexual behavior, and I find that word "emotional" very interesting. I, we, in reading through the curriculum, I found the word "feelings" 20 times, but there was nothing about logic, a logical rationality. Critical thinking was mentioned once. Also, in Section 8.2 SH, it also...
Comment today. Next is Jonathan Gold. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your comment.
I'm a pediatrician. I am also the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Michigan Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. We represent 1,500 pediatricians across the state, which is the vast majority of pediatricians in the state. And we support this updated standards. We support them because it is evidence-based and it's based on science. 17 years is a very long time to have health standards not be updated. Information is updated, you know, in our field yearly, and time clearly shows up in how the standards are implemented. I'm also on the Sex Ed Advisory Board of my local district, and there I can tell you that both the students and the teachers are really desperate for more updated information. And it's, these guidelines, I think, will help do that because they will drive the development of curriculum that allows that to happen. Thank you very much.
Next is Jennifer Oster. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
My name is Jen Oster, and I'm here today as a concerned Michigan parent of seven boys, as well as a local school board trustee in northern Michigan. The updated Health Education Standards Framework that you have been discussing and have on the agenda to bring for a vote represents the epitome of parental concern surrounding the indoctrination of our children by the public school system in our state. It is shameful that these updates are even being considered. If you adopt these new standards, the number of families withdrawing from this failed system will only continue to increase. It is past time for this board to spend your resources and energy on increasing student learning, particularly in the areas of literacy and mathematics, and less time infringing on the inherent rights of parents to determine the upbringing of their children. You need to shift your focus to ensuring robust education and abandon the ideological instruction that continues to sow distrust and division in our communities. To Ms. Stider and Mr. McMillan, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your strong stand, for your faithful stand for students and for families in our state.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Robert Downey. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Roger Downey from Brooklyn, Michigan. Health education is about cleanliness, right choices, healthy lifestyles that have always been given freely throughout all grades. Wash your hands. Can you find another way to express your feelings? Eat healthy, and so on. Plus, there are middle school, high school, and upper elementary school curriculums that are developed for that. Now, you are pushing Sex Ed to the limit with your Stain and Doors program that parents have to opt out if they do not want their children exposed to this, as K through 12. And you are planning to implement that Sex Ed has to be taken for graduation. No, these school districts are ours. We are trying to get our schools up to a point that our state is no longer 46th in place in the nation in reading, math, science, and comprehension. And you're going to force this Sex Ed on all grades. We, you are taking away the means to educate our children with what they need and what our parents want.
Thank you for your comment today.
Thank you.
I'll call for a second time the few names. We have Alicia Childers. Thank you. Erica Liken. Brent Hale. And Tracy Edmund. All right. We will now move to those to the queue online.
Point of order. I've gotten texts from...
Excuse me, Mr. McMillan.
Point of order.
Mr. McMillan.
Gotten texts from people that have been on, were kicked off after 30 minutes, been on the line, kicked off again, so...
Yeah, it's been two hours.
No, they got kicked off.
That's correct.
Is that, they're supposed to get kicked off?
It's a function of the system to be able to call in for. Right.
They can call back in.
They can call back in, and they'll be able to get their, back in the queue for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
All right, we'll now go to the queue online. Hello, caller, can you hear me? Hello, caller, if you'll please state your name and where you're calling from. You may begin your one minute of public comment.
Hello, my name is Jihun Ko, and I'm a student in Hafneek, Michigan, but also with the Michigan Organization for Adult and Sexual Health. I want to speak for the students who are not getting the health education they need. Across their region, what students learn depends on what a teacher has to them or training to cover difficult topics. Without clear standards, most teachers simply cannot take this on alone, and the information students receive varies by districts and schools. I think about my LGBTQ+ friends who have never had a lesson that speaks to their identities, classmates trying to understand gender identity or sexual orientation with no guidance. Students struggle with anxiety, depression, or substance use, and feel that they are left to figure it out by themselves. As a student, please help our young people learn about the issues that they are living through. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Whenever you're ready, please state your name and where you're calling from, and you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Hi, my name is Lauren Aki Parker. I'm calling from Rochester Hills, Michigan. I'm calling to support updates to the Health Education Standards because there are students who have guidance that reflects the realities of today, not 2007. These updates modernize our approach to include a fifth topic like consent, safety, and respect, healthy relationships, and mental well-being, the importance of inclusion and empathy. There are a lot of misconceptions out there, so let's be clear. No lessons are being enforced, and no rights are being taken away. Local districts will remain fully in control of the curriculum, and parents continue to play an active, central role in the children's education. These updates simply ensure that every student has access to accurate, age-appropriate information that helps them stay safe, grow confidently, and build strong, respectful relationships. This is a positive, responsible step forward for our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Hello, caller, can you hear me? Whenever you're ready, please state your name. If you could please mute the YouTube in the background?
Yeah, my name is Tracy Hobbs, and I am a school psychologist who serves on the Michigan Association of School Psychologists Executive Board. Speaking on our behalf, our Executive Board voted unanimously to support the adoption of the proposed draft Health Education.
You can, you can continue, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. The updated draft framework correctly emphasizes mental health, healthy relationships, and skill building alongside traditional health topics, represents a critical step forward. The comprehensive approach is directly supported by my profession's leading body, the National Association of School Psychologists. A position statement on comprehensive sexuality education, which firmly advocates for programs that are medically accurate and developmentally appropriate, inclusive, and skill-based. As a school psychologist, I understand that knowledge is a protective factor by equipping students with comprehensive, evidence-based health and sexuality education.
Thank you for your comment today. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yeah.
If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three, your one minute of public comment.
This is Rena Salem. I'm calling from Sterling Heights, Michigan. If you approve these standards as is, you will be creating more harm than good because the increasing number of people who will opt out will miss out on basic Sex Ed. Doesn't that matter to you? I don't think it does matter to you because this is political. There is a lot of honey being mixed with poison here for politically motivated people. It's disgusting to turn children's safe educational spaces into an adult's political battleground. There are three lies being pushed by proponents of the standards. Line number one is that this is all or nothing. Nobody is against all updates. Line number two is that gender expression and gender identity are equal in research. Nobody wants the LGBTQIA+ community to be bullied. There is zero science to support the encouragement of 11-year-olds to deny their birth gender, especially when science shows it will lead to a more difficult life. It's those who support the standards that are opposed to science. Everything is backwards here. Line number three is that this is aligned with the Elliot Larson Act of 2023. This is a poor citation. Why the confusion of inserting Sex Ed into Health Ed? Even if kids can opt out, that's extremely deceptive. Why not just separate it entirely out of Health Ed? It's not that hard.
Thank you for your comment today, caller. Thank you. Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Barabana, a trustee with Rochester Community Schools, speaking today as an individual and not on behalf of the RCS School Board. Our kids, our world, and what they need to know in health and sex ed has changed since 2007, and as the saying goes, when you know better, you do better. I support the revisions because every student deserves and should be seen in accurate, age-appropriate health and sex education that supports their social, emotional, and physical well-being. These updates still protect what matters most: parental rights, transparency, and local control. Parents can review lessons, opt out if they wish, and districts still decide how the standards are taught. Public education serves all students and is not a religious institution. That means teaching biological facts clearly, addressing sex and gender without bias, and fostering respect and empathy with honest questions should be encouraged and not silenced or shamed. or shamed. We owe it to Michigan students to give them the tools to lead healthy, informed, and respectful lives, and I urge...
Thank you for your comment today.
...all presented.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me? If you could please mute the YouTube in your background?
Yeah.
Thank you. If you could state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Good afternoon, my name is Beth Hewlett, I'm calling from Farmington Hills, Michigan. I am the vice president for communications for the Michigan PTA, and I'm speaking on behalf of more than twenty-four thousand parents and families statewide. We strongly support the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. Michigan standards haven't been updated since 2007, and today's students face very different challenges, especially in mental health, safety, relationships, and overall wellness. These proposed standards provide medically sound, evidence-based, age-appropriate guidance that equips students to make healthy, informed decisions. We believe educating the whole child is essential to learning. When children are healthy, they are ready to succeed. This framework's comprehensive approach, including mental health, substance use, safety in relationships, nutrition, physical activity, and personal and...
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you, caller. Hello caller, can you hear me? Caller, can you hear me? Hello there.
Oh, hello.
Hi, yes. If you would please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Oh, I apologize, I stepped away for a second from the hold. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Helen Craig, and I am calling from Sioux State Marine, Michigan. I'm a former teacher and current school health coordinator at the Eastern Upper Peninsula Intermediate School District. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Michigan School Health Coordinators Association in support of the proposed health standards. These updated standards reflect a commitment to preparing every student with the knowledge, skills, practices, and confidence needed to make healthy choices throughout life. We want students to receive the comprehensive, relevant, and responsible health education they deserve. As regional school health coordinators, we support our school districts in adopting curriculum that meets their local, health, community, and parent and caregiver needs. Regional school health coordinators strongly support adopting the health education standards framework, as it is grounded in expertise and reflects the realities students face today and tomorrow. Thank you for listening, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Thank you. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Great, my name is Nora Galperin, I'm calling from Washington, D.C. I'm the director of Sex Education at Advocates for Youth. I'm a national expert in sex education with over twenty-five years' experience. I have trained hundreds of health teachers in Michigan, and I'm calling to encourage you to vote yes on these outstanding health education standards, since it would give health teachers exactly what they have been asking for. They provide clear guidance on age and developmentally appropriate knowledge and skills to protect students' health and safety both now and into the future. Michigan, like other states, is smart to update their health education standards to reflect the scientific evidence that keep kids healthy and safe. Parents and teachers want this kind of instruction and guidance, kids deserve it, and Michigan law provides protections for parents who might feel differently. Please pass these outstanding health education standards so all Michigan students and families can benefit from a healthier tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Are you there?
Yes.
Thank you. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Hi, my name is Charlotte, I'm an out-of-state student currently, but I grew up in Michigan and was part of Amber Public Schools and also the Washington International School District. I would like to advocate on behalf in support of this bill. I did not have access to comprehensive sex ed through my school, but instead I learned about topics such as contraception and LGBTQ identities and reproductive health through an outside program. I know that comprehensive sex education is incredibly important for students in our schools. It gives students the tools that they need to navigate their own, as well as their sexual health and relationships. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hi. Yes.
Thank you. If you'd please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jenny Ryan, and I'm calling from Petoskey, Michigan. I'm here to express my support. Having been raised through Michigan public schools, I know the desperate need that we have. One vantage point that I have is as an honors graduate from MSU's Business School and graduate from U of M's full-time MBA program. After graduating, I learned the hard way that I was missing the confidence that comes from learning personal health, boundaries, and standing up for oneself. I've heard many people express their belief that parents should be responsible for teaching the proposed content. In my experience, though, many parents don't know what or how to teach for health or sex education. That was my personal experience, and I found myself realizing that my twenty-year relationship was holding me back, getting a divorce, and not knowing how to advocate for myself, articulate boundaries, or maneuver STIs. This was the case for all the people who I met when seeking a new lifelong partner who also grew up in the same generation as me with the current health standard. So please consider the lifelong skills that these standards will foster when making your decision, and also that local districts and parents will have to control over what their students learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Great. My name is Lisa Jo Gay-Gliardi, I'm calling from Heslin, Michigan. I am a child and adolescent health consultant, working for over eighteen years in different areas of school health and working with families as well. But I'm calling today as a parent, a stepparent, and a grandmother. And when we're talking about experts in the field, I want you to remind, many are parents, stepparents, or grandparents. I'm speaking today in strong support of the health education standards. I've reviewed them fully, and I understand my rights as a parent. Our youngest child is a senior in high school. She was born the same year the current standards were last updated in 2007. In just two years, I'll have a grandchild entering that same system. Nearly two decades without an update of it is unacceptable. One of our four children has autism, and I appreciate these standards better support of all students in learning about feeling, communication, and managing stress.
Thank you for your comment today.
Thank you.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Yes, ma'am. Greetings, my name is Mark Ashley Price, and I'm a former school board member of Holland Park. I called in last month to ask if the State Ball of Education could help the Holland Park School District. That is also the same reason why I am calling in now, to ask if the State Ball of Education could help the Holland Park School District. It really needs help. So I'm at... That's the same reason why I'm calling in now. Again, this is Mark Ashley Price, and I'm a former school board member of Holland Park, and God bless Michigan, and thank you guys for everything what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi. If you could mute YouTube in the background, please?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
I'm a psychologist in Macomb County, and safety and inclusion are important, so what about the children who identify biologically as a boy or girl, or straight? Do they not matter? My child was pulled from public education due to quote-unquote "normal bullying." We had no help from board administration. They handed us a flyer. We can't have a school psychologist sit in our schools, but we can pay superintendents four hundred thousand plus a year? This board has already failed us, especially during COVID. But also to our special education, literacy, and behavior intervention. This is America's turning point. This is beyond governmental overreach. The lawsuits will begin and school vouchers will be pushed, or make it clear that parents can opt out without repercussion. Do the right thing, fix what is already broken, not add more problems to it. Vote against this, choose people over politics.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
My name is Nofahurya, I grew up in Canton, Michigan, went to Annecy, and I'm currently a medical student at Harvard Medical School. I experienced the sex education curriculum, and now on the other side, I see how the lessons we didn't learn show up later in patient rooms. I've helped care for patients who lived years with undiagnosed conditions like endometriosis, teens misinformed by social media about contraception or consent, and queer patients who delayed care because they never saw themselves reflected in the classroom. These are preventable. When students receive medically accurate, inclusive information, they're less likely to face confusion, delayed diagnoses, or make unsafe decisions down the line. These standards give young people the knowledge and confidence to understand their bodies and advocate for their health. As a future physician and as someone shaped by Michigan's classrooms, I urge you to adopt these standards so every student grows up informed, supportive, and seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Bree Mogenberg, Isabella County. No matter how much you polish a turd, it's still a turd. Someone said these standards are about safety. They are not. Here are two reasons. One, if you want to teach healthy relationships about trusted adults, you must also include the flip side of what is not a trusted adult. It must include that students define and identify signs of rumors and predators. Number two, just as with dental cleaning, drug use, and unprotected sex, consequences must be taught. Standards must teach the dangers of gender-affirming hormone therapy and sex conversion. If you pluck two peaches from a tree, they cannot be replaced. If you slice a piece of sausage off the package, it cannot be reattached. The lack of teaching consequences is dangerous. These standards are not safe, they set students up for harm and schools for lawsuits. While I truly appreciate the updates, these standards are not yet ready.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you, caller, for your call today. Hello caller, can you hear me? Hello caller, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
My life, hi.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, this is Adam Mosup, I am a parent of two and a Dearborn School Board member. I do want to make sure that I'm speaking on my personal capacity here. After reviewing the draft, I urge the board to reconsider the current recommendations, and allow great flexibility for local districts to determine what best serves their students. My concerns are rooted in the following points. First, community diversity. Michigan communities are not monophyllic. Districts like Dearborn reflect a unique cultural, religious, and social context. Local boards are better positioned to adapt health education to reflect the values and needs of their families. Secondly, is parental trust. Parents expect their schools to be responsive to their voices. When standards are mandated at the state level, families often feel excluded from decision-making directly that affects their children's upbringing. I would urge you to reconsider those standards and have local districts...
Thank you for your call today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Gray, and I'm a clinical psychologist and an educator in southeast Michigan. I'm here to support the proposed framework because these evidence-based standards shine a light on what is often unnecessarily hidden from students. Even though diversity in gender and sexual orientation has been a part of natural human experience across the world and throughout human history, many LGBTQ+ students feel like they do not belong in school because there's no recognition that people like them exist. I've witnessed their subsequent injuries of exclusion and invisibility, as well as their resilience when they learn about gender diversity and transgender people who have accomplished amazing things. There's no reason to hide gender and sexual orientation diversity. Scientific research shows this diversity is healthy and natural, and inclusion goes hand-in-hand with safer and more respectful learning environments. These updated standards make the best standards in education available to parents and educators. Please support the opportunity for them to shine a light in schools and approve the updated...
Thank you for your comment today, caller.
Thank you.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yep, hello.
Hi, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
I gotta walk outside for a second. Shane Pruitt, Grosse Pointe, Michigan.
Very good. Go ahead and provide your comments, sir.
Yeah, no, I just personally feel that parents should still have options when it comes to sexual education, it shouldn't be combined with health ed. I feel that, you know, we... We should be able to express our religious background, that we raise our kids with certain moral values, and be able to protect that with the option to opt out of any sexual education that our children are gonna have to go through while they're in public schools, and combine it with the health ed, kind of muddies the water there. I just, I think it's a bad idea.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, caller. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hello.
Hi, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
Yeah, my name is Kira Hilton. I'm calling from Middleville, Michigan. I'm a school board member, and I'm also on the Sex Education Advisory Board. I'm calling with great concern. The National Conference on Preventative Medicine in 1975 defined it health education as, quote, "a process that informs, motivates, and helps people to adopt and maintain healthy practices and lifestyles, advocates environmental changes as needed to facilitate this goal, and conducts professional training and research to the same end." The Joint Committee on Health Education and Promotion Terminology of 2001 defined health education as "any combination of planned learning experiences based on sound theories that provide individuals, groups, and communities the opportunity to acquire information and the skills needed to make quality health decisions." The purpose of health class is to provide students with health risks they may face and how to avoid those risks. Health class does not discriminate. It teaches about drugs, addiction, alcohol, disease, hygiene, nutrition, and ways to keep yourself physically...
Thank you, caller, for your call today. Thank you.
You guys are a joke.
Hello caller, can you hear me? Caller, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Thank you. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your one minute of public comment.
Hello, my name is Megan Miller, and I strongly oppose these health standards. I'm here as a concerned parent and citizen who cares deeply about the health and moral foundation of our children in Michigan. These standards introduce controversial concepts that conflict with the beliefs of many families in Michigan and undermine parental authority. At the October meeting, over fifty people spoke and forty-eight opposed these standards. Our Constitution says that the government derives its power from the consent of the governed. As elected officials, you have a duty to listen and act on the public vote. As a follower of Jesus, I believe Proverbs 22:6, "Train up a child in the way that he should go." Parents have the God-given responsibility to guide their children's hearts and minds. These standards risk replacing... These standards risk replacing that with ideology that does not align with biblical truth. How we teach our children to be joyful, full of character and integrity, we teach them about Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, who gives hope and forgiveness. True joy doesn't come.
Thank you for your call today. Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I sure can, can you hear me?
I sure can. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
I sure can. My name is Scott Nugent, and I'm calling from Indiana.
Thank you.
Well, I called because, you know, there's, there's very few people that have all the boxes checked. I'm a transgender man, lesbian who medically transitioned, also was on the Matt Walsh's What is a Woman? So-called hero. Also have three kids. So I've got all those boxes checked. And all I want to say is that medical transition is cosmetic surgery. I deserve all the respect and dignity that anybody else does, but it's not something for a child. And the LGBTQ, unfortunately, what a lot of people don't realize, this agenda that's being pushed into our schools, this queer theory, was coined by three individuals. And this is the truth. One's a pedophile, one was not a pedophile but okay with it, and one was a lesbian who was okay with pedophilia as long as the child enjoyed themselves. So.
Thank you for your call today. Thank you for your comment. Your time is up caller. Thank you caller. Nope, your time is up. I'm sorry. Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hi there, yes, one second, please let me unmute this.
Thank you. When you're ready, if you'd state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Alicia Childers. I am from McComb County, and I am aware that some of the board has made it extremely clear through some of your statements and media. Nearly 2,000 parents signed a petition in the just the past week asking for you to listen, yet you're moving away and you're going forward with this even though we are against it, even providing secret access for your LGBTQ activists, strategically placing them throughout the lineup so that we are not able to speak. And that speaks volumes in this election year coming up. This isn't about raising healthy kids. It's about pushing ideology under the guise of curing bullying. Bullying shouldn't be, should absolutely be handled throughout parents and administration, not through political lessons and curriculums. Michigan already rejected this Massachusetts-style model last year through a vote. At the end of the day, sex ed is not health ed by law. And also, Michigan ranks 44th out of 50 in education. Michigan parents are not misinformed like the president running for state senate mentioned. The ones being escorted in and out of this, they're the ones that are not reading the draft. And literally, this replaces the parental authority with government-approved beliefs.
Thank you for your call today caller. Thank you for your comment. Hello caller, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Thank you. If you could please mute YouTube in the background.
I will do that.
Thank you. There you go. When you're ready, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of comment.
Yes, hi, my name is Kimberly, and I'm calling from Detroit. I am writing to express my strong opposition to this amended sex education curriculum that is being proposed. I have a small child. The proposal not only undermines parental rights, but also unnecessarily promotes the over-sexualization of children by emphasizing topics such as sexual orientation and gender identity. Also, there should have been several in-person community meetings to allow people to voice their input on this critically important issue. It's unacceptable that people were only given the option to participate in a hearing in Lansing or to submit online comments. We have a board, we have board members from all over the state, and there should have been much more engagement on this critically important issue. I firmly believe that introducing our children to sexual orientation and gender identity are unnecessary and should be left to the parents to determine when or if they would like to discuss this issue with their children.
Thank you for your comment today. Hello caller, can you hear me? Hello caller, are you there?
Yes. Hello.
Hello, there you are. If you could state your name and where you're calling from, you may have, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
My name is Tiffany, calling from Detroit. I am here to state in the strongest possible terms that I oppose any effort by the Michigan Department of Education, school districts, educators to promote, teach, or include gender ideology, identity in classrooms. Material is not academic, it is not educational. It is ideological and has absolutely no place in K-12 schools, any grade level or age. These are deeply personal beliefs that belong in the home under the guise of parents, not inside government-run classrooms. I also firmly oppose all revised standards, attempts to insert this ideology into health education, social-emotional learning, academic benchmarks, or staff training. Embedding this content into standards is an overstep of the authority and a direct violation of parental rights. Michigan schools are facing real academic crisis, declining scores, math gaps, persistent safety concerns. Instead of focusing on these priorities, the state is pushing ideological material that divides families and distracts from learning. I'm urging the board to reject every policy.
Thank you for your comment today caller.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I sure can. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Barb Bliss, and I'm the founder of Parent Action for Healthy Kids, located in South Wyon, Michigan. I support the proposed health standards. They are solid. They are prized districts of the scope of health education. Beyond the business of the health standards on today's agenda, there is a fundamental choice that everyone will make today. No matter how this vote goes, I want to bring dignity front and center. Dignity resides in all of us. A culture of contempt has pulled us away from our own dignity. Our children and adolescents are watching. The "them versus us, they won, we lost" mindset lures us, lures us into contempt. Today, each of us will make a choice. Practice dignity or practice contempt. We all share complicity in building this monster of contempt in our words, actions, and social media feeds. Contempt has set our fears and created habits that distance us rather than connect us.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you caller. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. If you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten, and I'm calling from Grand Rapids. I am a registered nurse and a member of the Michigan Association of School Nurses, representing more than 400 nurses serving in 225 school districts across our state. I'm here today to strongly support the Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. Every day, I see how a student's health directly impacts their learning and success. The Michigan Association of School Nurses supports these updated standards that give students the tools they need to stay safe. They can form choices and take charge of their own well-being. They teach vital skills like how to respond to health emergencies, advocate for themselves in healthcare settings, understand their own rights, and even save lives through CPR and AED training. Every child deserves a safe and supportive environment where health education promotes both physical and emotional well-being. School nurses are proud to partner in this mission. Every day, we care for students facing the very health concerns addressed in these standards. We see every day how accurate, evidence-based education protects students' health and safety and empowers students to take an active role in their own.
Thank you for your call today. Thank you caller. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
I sure can. If you please state your name and where you're calling from, you may provide your one minute of public comment.
Sure, thanks so much. Uh, my name is Erica Ligon. My pronouns are they, then. And I'm calling from Ypsilanti, Michigan. I'm a trans, non-binary parent to a nine-year-old and co-founder of the People's Coalition. I'm speaking to you today as someone who would have benefited from inclusive sex and health education standards while growing up, and that my nine-year-old son will benefit from these updated standards. As I began dating in my teens, I had no tools on how to participate in a conversation around sex. I experienced sexual violence in my relationship and was not equipped to deal with it, didn't feel safe to share or tell adults about it until I was myself an adult. This emotional trauma affected much of my academic work in high school. I don't have time to address gender or sexual identity now, but it would have been so affirming to see myself represented and included in this way at school and saved me years of therapy. I would have benefited from a comprehensive health and sex education program, and I am strongly in support of these standards. If we want informed and empowered children that grow into informed and empowered adults, we have to be willing to give them the education and tools in our school system.
Thank you caller for your comment today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yep.
Very good.
Katie McFarland, I'm a, I'm a parent in the Oak County, Michigan. Um, I vehemently oppose these new health standards that the Democrats on the Michigan Board of Education um, are trying to impose on children and families. You know, there's families of all different religions and backgrounds within the public schools. Parents have the fundamental right to raise their children. These standards just further exemplify your blatant disrespect for parents, especially Christians who understand the absolute truth that God created each and every one of us perfectly in His own image, and we need to be telling our children that and teaching them the truth and not harming them as you have all been doing, except for, of course, Tom and Nikki. You know, if you want to talk about inclusion, let's stick to the basics of what I tell my kids. Be that leader who invites a kid who has no one to sit with to join you and your friends at your lunch table. Simple, common sense teachings of morality and kindness without pushing agendas that go against values being taught in the home are all that is needed for ensuring all students feel welcome and included in their school. You know, I look forward to seeing all of you sued. The Democrats on this board sued.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
Those are all the registered callers.
Thank you so much. This concludes public participation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Evans, and thank you to all the comments. Next on the agenda for today is item E, the approval of minutes of regular and committee of the whole of October 14, 2025. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of October 14, 2025? Senator Bullock and Ms., Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Ms. Evans, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next item is item F, the approval of the minutes of the legislative committee meeting held on November 6, 2025. Dr. Pritchett, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Robinson, thank you very much. Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew? Robinson? Snyder?
Pass.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the next item is item G, the presentation and approval of the proposed health education standard guidelines. Standards which were approved in 2005, uh, '07 are now outdated due to significant changes that have occurred since that time. Revising the 2007 health standards will enhance their alignment with the national health education standards, which are, which were updated in 2024. The proposed standards, or the proposed updated standards were presented to the state board on September 9, 2025. We held a period of public comment. In addition, and additional changes have been made to reflect these and other comments. Today, you will hear an overview of the changes based on the themes from public comment. Following the presentation, board members will be able to ask, will be asked to approve the updated comments. Welcome to our presenter, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Deputy Superintendent of Division of, Division of Business, Health, and Library Services. Amy Alanese, who is the Director of Health and Safety. Ms. Amy Wassman, Supervisor of the Office of Health and Safety. Ms. Stacy Seals is a Regional School Health Coordinator in Ottawa. Ottawa, ISD, sorry about that. And she's a former health education teacher. Welcome presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Cornell, and thank you, board, for this time. We appreciate it. Today, we are here to present a revised draft that has followed the public comment period of the K-12 Health Education Standards Guidelines for your consideration and adoption. This draft moves beyond the outdated guidance from 2007 to emphasize essential practices such as self-awareness, goal-setting, all advocacy, all delivered through trauma-inclusive, inclusive, trauma-informed, and developmentally appropriate instruction. As you may remember, we presented the first draft of the standards at the September 9 board meeting. We then opened for public comment for 30 days. That formal public comment period closed on October 10. We had the draft standards posted on our website. We had social media posts that were encouraging public comment. And we also had multiple press releases encouraging public comment and clarifying parent opt-out provisions. We continued to receive additional emails on the topic, and we followed the established processes, making sure that revisions were made to the Health Education Standards Guidelines. So as you may remember, the first draft was called the Framework. It is now called the Guidelines. Those are grounded in subject matter expertise and designed to reflect the choices that students face today for their future health. The practices for health education are applied to important topics that make up health education, including mental and emotional health, safety, healthy relationships, balanced eating and physical activity, substance use and misuse, personal health and wellness, community and environmental health, and in Michigan, the option of sex education.
So we just wanted to take a moment and discuss the 30-day public comment period that we had. We had a formal survey system open for the full 30 days. During that time, we had 1,338 surveys completed. There were 924 that opposed. And then in bold there, you can see the top reasonings for opposing. for opposing. Gender topics included in the Health Standards Guidelines. Sex ed should not be included, or sex ed should be separate, separated out from the health ed standards. Parent opt-out believed to be removed, and the belief that proposing standards is legislative overreach. We also had 250 that supported, and then we have the reasons for that, on the need for updating standards, the guidelines being more inclusive of all students, and then the alignment to the national standards that were passed about a year ago. Um, and then we did have another bucket of surveys that we did not count in that because they either were for not from Michigan, or they did not say clearly if they supported or opposed. Outside of the actual formal survey system public comment, we received many, many emails. We had over 2,000 emails sent to board members and/or MDE staff, and with those emails, we had 896 that opposed for the same types of reasonings, and we also had over 1,100 that were in support for the same reasonings of the inclusivity and updated standards. We also had public comment that was received during board meetings. I will not spend a lot of time on that because you were all here for that portion of that. So you all heard that, but just to summarize, we had about 50 commenter, commenters opposing with 17 commenters supporting. So we also received formal letters from our associations and organizations across the state. We did have three formal letters of support from three different parent associations, the Michigan Parent Association, or Parent Teacher Association, I apologize, Parent Action for Healthy Kids, and the Red Wine and Blue Michigan. Those numbers in the parentheses are their membership count. In addition, we had a variety of educational associations that sent documentation of support that are up there on there. I won't go all over all of them, but Association of Intermediate School Administrators, the Michigan Education Association, Elementary and Middle School Principals Association, the Association of School Boards, the Association of Secondary School Principals, Superintendents and Administrators, and the Michigan Health Coordinators Association to be, um, represent some of those. We also had health associations that supported the documenta, that sent formal letters of documentation of support. Among these are the Michigan Chapter American Academy of Pediatrics, the Michigan Public Health Association, Michigan Health and Hospital Association, and Michigan Association of School Nurses, among others. We also received a few other associations that sent formal documentation of support, the IMPACT Program out of University of Michigan, the Student Power Alliance, the Unitarian Universalist Social Justice Network, and Puberty the Wonder Years. So those were just some of the formal letters of support that we received at the department.
So we, um, we took the feedback from all of those. Am I on? Okay, sorry. We reviewed the feedback from the surveys, the emails to board members, public comment during September and October State Board of Education meetings, and letters of support from state organizations, and made edits based on those common themes. First, we reviewed the standards relating to gender topics to assure gender identity and gender expression were only under the sex education topic standards. We reorganized the guidelines into three sections to be clearer, with an appendix outlining all related health and sex education laws in Michigan. We moved sex education topic to its own section within the guidelines so it is separate from the other health topics. We outlined all laws related to sex education, gender identity, and gender expression, including the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, in multiple places within the guidelines. We kept in gender when we looked at the feedback. Oppo, those who stated they opposed gender in our health ed standards was 1,083, but we had 1,151 individuals say that they supported gender in our health standards, and all of our state organizations that were listed on the PowerPoints also supported that inclusion. Our next theme that we saw in the feedback in opposition was around sex education included in health ed. Sex ed has been part of Michigan's public education system since 1959. Another theme that, that we talked about was adding sex ed to the health ed class. And Michigan law states that only teachers that have a health endorsement can teach sex education. That is why historically, sex ed units resides in the health ed courses. To add clarity to the document, we reviewed the historical documents validating that sex education has been part of Michigan's comprehensive health education standards in previous versions, include, including the most recent 2007 version. We repositioned standards to help clarify that sex education topics are only required under the sex education section of the guidelines. We changed the name from sex, sexual health to sex education to add clarity. We reorganized the guidelines into three sections to be clearer, and it add an appendix outlining all related health and sex education laws in Michigan. We moved sex educa, excuse me, we moved sex education topic to its own section within the guidelines so it is separate from the other health topics. Another theme that came up was around parent opt-out. MDE, with the thought that MDE was removing the parent opt-out piece, MDE is not, nor has the authority to override a state law. Edits in this revised Health Education Standard Guidelines include enhancing language concerning parent rights and opt-out laws, reinforcing parental authority throughout the document, including wording in multiple areas in the new draft to make parent rights clearer throughout the document. Made it more explicitly clear that all sex education provided must follow every aspect of the law, including parent notification and opt-out. Reorganizing the guidelines into three sections to be cleared, and to be clear, and added an appendix outlining all related health and sex education laws in Michigan. Moving sex education topic to its own section within the guidelines so it is separate from the other health topics. And reviewing standards to assure that sex education topics were only under the sex education guidelines. Another theme that came out in regards to opposition was the legislative overreach. We have addressed this concern by outlining the law, MCL 380.1278, requiring the development and adoption of standards in addition to the laws supporting local control for curriculum choice, including sex education if it is offered. Reorganized the guidelines into three sections to be clearer, with an appendix outlining all the related health and sex education laws in Michigan. We moved sex education topic to its own section within the guidelines so it is separate from the other health topics, repeating the related laws. We outlined all laws related to health education in multiple places within the guidelines. We made it more explicitly clear that all sex ed education must follow every aspect of the law, including the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, in multiple places within the guidelines. Finally, the graduation requirement. Those in opposition expressed concern that the new guidelines would require sex ed as part of the health education requirement for graduation. The edited guidelines clearly outlines that this is not the case. The new guidelines outlined in the law, while health education is a requirement for graduation, districts select the course content, methods, and instructional resources that will meet that requirement. We linked MCL 380 1507 and clearly stated that even if a district chooses to include sex education unit as part of the health education course, parents still have the right to opt their child out of sex education without penalty or loss of academic credit. We clarified that sex ed cannot be embedded into other academic classes. We reorganized the guidelines into three sections to be clearer and to add an appendix outlining all related health and sex education laws in Michigan. We outlined all laws related to health education in multiple places within the guidelines. We made it more explicitly clear that all sex education must follow every aspect of the law, including the ability to opt their child out of sex education without penalty or loss of academic credit.
Okay, I'm speaking today about what it looks like at the local level. I'm a school health consultant, so I work with our local districts and our local educators, also a former health teacher as well. Districts will use Health Education Standards Guidelines as a guide when reviewing, selecting, and developing their health education curriculum. Districts use student and community data to choose which lessons in the health curriculum should be taught. If sex education is included, sex advisory, sex education advisory boards, what have been called CEBs today, should use student and community data to recommend sex education lessons and curricula to the local school district for approval. So this is what would happen in every local district that would go through this process. Parents must receive notification that sex education unit and lessons are coming up. Districts must offer parents the opportunity to review all of the materials. Districts must offer parents the opportunity to opt out. Teachers only use the local CEB recommended, recommended, and local board-approved curriculum to teach sex education. So with that, regional school health coordinators like myself provide technical assistance and training to support districts and educators in following health and sex education laws and best practices. I just want to add too that that is already in place. What we have right now, since 2007, is what's also listed on this slide.
Thank you, Stacy. In summary, Article 8, Section 3 of the Michigan Constitution requires MDE and all local districts to follow all laws of the state of Michigan. That includes the 2023 Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act, which includes provisions to ensure equal opportunities for equality education and to promote inclusivity, which includes sexual orientation and gender identity. The 2007 version of the Health Education Standards are outdated, and they need to be updated to reflect today's society and the pressures on our children, as well as the new Michigan laws. Educators have been requesting this update for years to include those relevant topics. As a result, we are seeking your approval of the newly revised Health Education Standards Guidelines as presented. Thank you. Dr. Carnell?
Thank you, Dr. Golzinski and team. I also want to introduce Ms. Lori Beckhoffer. She's our content expert and works at the department, so welcome, Lori. So, uh, once we have a motion and a second on the health standards, then we can open the floor to discussion. Is there a motion to adopt?
Approved.
Thank you. All right, discussion? Ms. Snyder?
So I'll, I'll start with a couple of just questions and then refer to a number of different statutes and documents that are updated. What are these, standards or guidelines? It says Michigan Health Education Standards Guidelines. Which one?
It's standards guidelines.
Okay. The Department of Education does not have a statutory authority to develop standards. You refer to the statutory authority of the State Board of Education. It is the only body that has the statutory authority to develop standards and adopt them. You have the statutory authority to develop guidelines in relationship health education, which is very specifically prescribed by the legislature. And yet I laugh, Amy, because you suggest that the legislature has overstepped. In fact, the department has overstepped. And then you ask the State Board of Education to adopt these things as if it was our idea to begin with, and we did not have any opportunity to develop them ourselves, even though it is in fact our statutory authority to do such. So who did in fact develop them? I feel like we need to name the people who developed these. If they are not members of the State Board of Education, then we need to take a huge step back. And that's before I even challenge the validity of what's on the table here.
So Ms., if I, if I can?
I'm sorry, I'm still, this is, no, not yet. I'm asking questions. I'd like them to be answered honestly, and then I would like to continue to go with the turn that I have.
No one's arguing that.
Okay.
So my question to you is, which law are you referring to that says that the, the State Board of Ed develops standards?
Well, actually, you've included it in the very beginning of the document.
Mm-hmm.
So you have it.
Which one are you, we have several in the document.
At the very beginning.
We have several in the document, so just checking with you, which one are you referring to?
380 1278, Core Academic Curriculum. State Board shall develop and periodically update recommended model core academic curriculum content standards. 380 1278A, Health Credit Education Requirement. At least one credit in subject matter that includes both health and physical education aligned with guidelines developed by the Department of Education and approved by the State Board. You have the statutory authority to develop guidelines, not standards. That's a fundamental concept of what we're working with right now. So when I say, what are these, and you say they're standards guidelines, there's an intentional muddying of the water already. But I can, but let's go back to really the beginning of the intentional muddying of the water to take state law, which has separated health education and sex education, and throw it out the window. And I'd argue today, we've found that many people believe that parental rights should be taken away. That's the fundamental reason why we're here today in arguing about this. So you say you reviewed historical documents validating that sex education has been a part of Michigan's comprehensive health education standards in previous versions, including the most recent 2007 version. This is the 2007 version. The very front of that says these are Michigan Merit Curriculum Credit Guidelines, because that's what you have the statutory authority to develop. So, no, in fact, it is a blatant lie that you are presenting here today, that you've reviewed historical documents validating that sex education has always been a part of Michigan's comprehensive health education.
Ms. Snyder. Ms. My, Ms. Snyder.
No, I am going to continue, so you do not get to interrupt me.
Ms. Snyder, I will not have you call the staff a lie.
It is a blatant lie.
I will not have you call the staff a lie.
I'm showing you the proof, and I am not going to back down. It's very clear that these are guidelines from 2007, and that you are suggesting that sex education has all, you're not even suggesting it, you're stating it, that it, they've always been in health education, education standards.
Ms. Snyder.
They have not been. I'm going to keep going, Sue.
Ms. Snyder.
So here we are.
We will not have, just like we, Ms. Snyder. Ms. Snyder.
I am not out of order, Sue. You do not need to interrupt me.
Just like we have the public not-call-out people on the board, I would ask board members to respect staff. That's all I'm asking.
Are lies.
That's your opinion? I would ask that you not disrespect the staff.
It's not an opinion. For those listening online and those who are engaged, if you look up the 2007 Michigan Merit Curriculum Credit Guidelines, which is what the state, what the state legislation and statute has that has given you the prescribed authority to develop in health education credit, we have not previously had sex education standards in health education. That is inaccurate. Is that a nicer way to say it? That is an incredible inaccuracy that we need to acknowledge. Okay, so now, you're presenting us with Health Education Standards Guidelines, conflating the difference between the statutes that give you the authority to do what you do, give us the authority to do what we do, so that you can intentionally conflate the difference between health education and sex education. That is literally the act of grooming a public before you can eventually groom them with the topics that you choose to define as health education. So let's look at laws and model policies that guide school health service programs in Michigan. It's a resource for school nurses. I'm a school nurse myself. I'm in schools every day as well. This was adopted in 2013 and revised in January of 2024. I'm going to go through the table of contents that governs all of the laws and model policies that guide school health services programs in Michigan. This is what defines health education. Absenteeism, abuse, anaphylaxis, asthma, autism, bloodborne pathogens, bullying, cardiac emergency response plans, child protection, communicable disease, concussions, confidentiality, controlled substances, coordinated school health, curriculum, delegation and scope of practice, dental, diabetes, do not attempt to resuscitate, environment, emergency preparedness, family engagement, first aid and CPR, hearing and vision, health disparities, health services, HIV, immunizations, marijuana, medical administration, meningitis, mental health, opioids, oral health, pregnancy, pregnancy, pregnancy-safe delivery, record retention, reproductive health, restraint and seclusion, rights of minors, school nursing, school safety, school wellness, social worker role, suicide, son's safety, telehealth, and tobacco. There is key federal legislation and state legislation that defines what health education is in our schools. None of it includes sex education. That is intentional. That is historical. And what is happening here is not only is there not a legislative overstep, there is a Department of Education massive overstep that is happening, because you are conflating two different statutes, you do not have the authority to do it, and you are conflating two different topics that you do not have the authority to confuse the public with the intention of truly eventually repealing the sex education law, and then parental rights will be gone. That has already been attempted. House Bill 6068, last session, when it was blue head to toe, did not even make it out of committee. What they intended to do at that point in time was to erase all of the shalls in the sex education law and make them musts. Right? If we shall do something and it's local control to do it, and we now must do something, there are no parental rights, are there? That did not make it out of committee. The other thing they tried to do is with the Sex Education Advisory Board, is they said, you know what? It's made up of, of different members of the community, right? They crossed out clergy, and they remained community health professionals. What we've seen here today is a number of community health professionals that are willing to show up and say that such standards should be rooted, rooted in essentially worshiping the altar of identity being centered in sexuality, when there is no proof that that's how Michigan roots health education. There are people that believe their identity is defined by something entirely different and separate from sexual identity and gender. When we attempt to go about policy this way, we are steamrolling the freedom and the rights that everyone has in this country. That's just the beginning.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Senator Bullock?
Well, I got a whole lot going on right now, but first, I need every member to address the chair as chair, not sue. Second, I'm, as I'm still new, as far as I know in my current life, the State Board does have the authority through the consti, Constitution. does have the authority through the Constitution to create standards and guidelines, right? If I, if I am wrong, I need to get correct information.
Approve standards. We approve standards that we bring to the floor, to the board. These are guidelines. And as such, as guidelines, the board really doesn't have the authority to approve them.
That's inaccurate as well. Statute would argue that, I just read it.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what you're reading, I'm just saying, as far as being a former elected official and being on this board and trying to gather information, I may not be the smartest person in the room, but I'm generally well-informed, and I just don't know where, it someplace says that the Michigan Board of Education cannot create standards as you threatened or tried to address them.
And that would be the dysfunction of this body.
So, Ms. Snyder, thank you. Do you have, are you done, Senator Bullock?
Uh, I yield for now.
Okay. Mr. McMillan, and then Ms. Tilly.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the department, so, sex education is not in the Michigan Merit curriculum, is that right?
No.
No, it's not.
Lori? It's not.
It's not.
Yes, it only says something about HIV, right? I mean, there's nothing other than that.
HIV is strand six, and sex education is strand seven, and they're all in the same Michigan Merit Curriculum Credit Guidelines.
Yeah, but the requirement is specifically for HIV and sexually transmitted diseases, right? That's it.
Are you talking about standards? Are you talking about the law?
I'm talking about Michigan Merit Curriculum.
The law. Oh my goodness.
What is in the Michigan Merit Curriculum?
The law. The statute does not describe sex education under health education.
Ms. Snyder.
They're not answering the questions.
Ms. Snyder.
You've got experts not being experts.
We're just asking for protocol at this point.
Yeah.
So it's not in the Michigan Merit Curriculum, and so I'm wondering, what is the basis for including sex education in these standards or guidelines or whatever confusing thing you want to try to make them? What's the, what's the basis? It's for including these?
Because sex education is a portion of health education.
No, it's not.
Which, which section? And what, what does it say that it is to cover? Is it just HIV required in MCL 1 or 380.1170A CPR and required by MCL 380.1169 HIV?
Mr. McMillan, if you looked at Section 1 of the updated standards, you would see what is required by law.
1507.
Okay, well.
380, 1507.
So it's clear, you guys, don't, there is no, and you know, the last standards in 2007, the sex education part was one and a half pages, it was very benign, there was nothing, no gender identity, no, you know, all this stuff, really, there's no basis, there's no, you have no statute that requires it or that even allows this department to put this in there. I'm quite certain there will be litigation, which is sad that we're, you guys are going to pass something potentially, unless two of you come to your senses, and you're going to pass something that is going to result in tax dollars being wasted through litigation, because clearly there is no basis for that. Second thing, Dr. Carnell, or Chair, during the testimony before the State House, said that, that you all chose Massachusetts as the template, because, and I want to get the exact words right, Massachusetts has the same type of standards that they are, and they are more successful getting kids in the classroom to learn their high-quality instruction. That's why it's being used, that's what she, word for word, at one hour and five minutes into the YouTube video. I asked for, you know, "Show me proof that it's getting them into the, into the classroom, that it's improving the standards." And she sent me basically that says Massachusetts has some good outcomes in math, and there was none. Okay, so the fact is, I want to make it clear, there's no basis for using Massachusetts standards, health standards, I just wanted to make that very clear. It was an untruth that was said at the Oversight Committee.
Not an untruth.
I'd like to, I can, I can have my opinion.
You can.
Leave me alone, will you?
Okay.
So I want to ask the department, and we heard from some people that gave testimony, they were, they delivered sex education instruction to many schools, there's five of them here. They said that routinely, the opt-outs are not done, they're not, you know, parents are not given warning for opt-outs, they're not done. What is the penalty for that? If there's no, if they don't give opt-out instruction, what is the penalty?
You're asking if the district is not offering the parent opt-out?
District, if a parent, you know, whatever it is, just what is the penalty for not giving opt-out?
It would be against the law, so they would, they could be charged.
What's the penalty?
On the penalty.
Let's make it clear that that's what's happening here, is that there is no penalty. Now, if I'm in the legislature, or, you know, if I have any say, I do think that like two strikes and you're out, you're fired, or, you know, $10,000 per offense. I mean, those are the kind of things that would put some teeth, that we'd actually have. Opt-outs would even mean anything. You all say, "Don't worry, there's opt-outs." They, they're meaningless. They are absolutely meaningless when you tell me there's no penalty. So don't, you know, and also, we shouldn't be having to worry about opt-outs. Why are we putting things in these standards that we know two-thirds of, to three-fourths of the public don't agree with? So, you know, it is clear that, and then also, I want to understand, you know, you guys talk about how local districts can do whatever they want for health, for the health class, is that right?
They can choose their curriculum.
There's local control, their curriculum, they can do whatever they want.
Right.
Right? That's what I heard you say, is that it's local control.
They can choose whichever concepts that they...
Right, so there's no way that they could put so little that their, you know, accreditation is, you know, I mean, if they choose one of the standard, like 1% of the standards, and that's all they're going to put in health badge, something minor, they're, they're fine with doing that, they don't have to follow the majority or substantially all, there's nothing like that, you're not going to pull their accreditation, they could basically not teach health class, and they're fine, and the kids would graduate, is that what you're saying?
There is a half-credit requirement in the Michigan Merit Curriculum for health.
But it, but it doesn't have to follow these standards whatsoever, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Not one part of it? Because I think that's wrong, and I think that the, you know, the MEA and, you know, the establishments, lawyers that are all there, they will tell the boards, "You got to do basically everything here." They'll, they'll tell them that you got to do the sex standards as well, I mean, it's, I've seen how this plays out, you just want to get it in here. And that's why I really think we need to make sure, it would be wise to not put things in here that, A, there's no statutory authority, and we shouldn't be doing it at all, and that will be litigated, and B, you know, it's stuff that, that many are going to have to opt-out, that there won't be opportunities, we know how this is going to play out, and you do too. This is all being done, well, it's all being done because there's powerful left-wingers, and you guys are following the 20% versus the 80% on these issues. So I mean, those are, those are the questions I had. I do have substantial issues with the standards. I'll say that, you know, the health standards are required to have physiology, hygiene, drugs, narcotics, alcohol, tobacco, mental health, dental health, vision, nutrition, disease prevention control, and accident prevention. That's what's in the MCL, that's what's actually in the statute. Dems did try to change that last term, they had the majority in the House, Senate, and Governor, they couldn't get it out of committee because this stuff is so radical that they, even some Dems in the House knew that it would harm them and also probably harm kids. But of all those I just mentioned, in these standards, these topics are mentioned 151 times. Sex and gender are mentioned 253 times. I don't know what the obsession with sex is among you people, I mean, it is a true grooming that's going on, that is really sad, and the people understand that that is the intent of what's going on here. There's also this idea of advocacy. You know, here again, the far-left has captured this party. I mean, you know, 30 times environment, 21 times culture is in there, 77 times society or socia, social, I mean, these belong in social studies, these are not, these are not in health standards. There's a lot of problems with these. You know, there's civil rights issues. I mean, we've already seen with Mahmoud V. Taylor that, you know, there's religious in the First Amendment rights that these are going to collide with for sure, especially when you know that there's not going to be opt-out, it's very difficult, and that's what Mahmoud talked about, was the difficulty of opting out is something that can't be done, and you know it's going to be done as you pass these. Also, there's health teachers who have already been certified, and you're saying that now they're going to be forced to teach things that they disagree with in these sex, or they're going to lose their job. And so certainly, there's civil rights issues with that as well. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, there was good testimony, I think it was pathetic that you guys forced everybody to just basically read so quickly that they couldn't even, nobody could understand it, it was truly sad, and when we are a majority, that's not going to happen, I will tell you that. I would just, I do have one amendment that I would like to make, and, and I don't have it written out, I was busy listening and making sure that I took notes, but it's pretty simple. It's on page 66. It's the area that says, "Define gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation, and explain that they are distinct components of every individual's identity." And I brought this up back in September, I, you know, to say that they are, that's, that's a factual statement that is just, you know, it's a belief, and even, even the chair acknowledged at the Oversight Committee, it's a belief. There are people that believe this, there are people that don't believe it. So to suggest that it's, that it should be "are", I just, I, I can't believe that, like, right-thinking people would actually say that. So I would, part of my amendment would just be to say, sexual orientation, and explain that some believe that they are distinct components. So just, "Some believe that" would be added after the word "that". And then the second one would be, on the second portion, "Explain how biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression are distinct concepts and how they're, how they interact with each other." Here again, it's just, it's a, it's a belief, it's not an "are", this should not be in the standards, that it's a fact. So I would say, "Explain how biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression", and that some, some believe they are distinct concepts. Gender expression, and how some believe they are distinct concepts and how they interact. So it just, really, it's just making it clear that these are not, it, what was the testimony before the Oversight Committee by our state superintendent and by every common-thinking person would say, "These are beliefs. The vast majority of Michiganders don't believe this." And to suggest that they are, is just, I would hope that we could at least get that passed. So that is my motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
I very reluctantly seconded it, and I'll explain why.
Ms. Snyder, we have a motion on the floor, so we can do an amendment. Okay. So we have a motion, an amendment to the motion to amend Sex Education 8.2?
8.2, point S.H.
Ms. Snyder, second it?
My reluctant second, and I will explain why.
Okay. Discussion? Dr. Pugh.
I clearly will be voting no on that proposed amendment, but I, but before we go any further through the chair, I need to ask Board Member McMillan if he called people at this table groomers.
I'm just stating what I'm reading.
You need to be careful what you say, because yes, you did, and you need to retract that.
I was saying that these standards are...
No, you said that people at this table were groomers and intentional groomers. You need to retract that.
I'm not sure that that's what I said, I...
Those are dangerous words, and you need to be careful what you say at this table.
Well, I'm not going to retract something I didn't say.
Snyder. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Are you done, Dr. Pugh? Ms. Snyder?
I have requested publicly, President Pugh, that you retract the words you used during COVID, suggesting that those that did not agree with your mask mandates were killing children. You have never retracted that statement. If you want to talk about dangerous words, revisit your own behavior.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
I am not done.
And you need to check your behavior at the table. It is out of line. It is out of line. It needs to be brought into order.
Okay.
I can't stand the disrespect. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
I would like to review what we were talking about with whether or not local districts must comply with these standards.
Yes. Is your discussion about the motion?
Yes. It directly relates to it.
Come to the point.
I will get there. When we say there are two different genders, what was the Second Amendment, Tom?
Biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression are distinct concepts.
Okay. When we say there are two gen, are more than two genders, and that those concepts are facts, and we put them out there as standards and guidelines, and the statute does in fact say, you guys said, "No, they don't have to comply with it", that's inaccurate. Statute says that local districts must comply. So what you're saying, again, the convenient inaccuracies that are just flying about, this idea of, "No, it doesn't comply, there's local control", you're speaking out of both sides of your mouth. And when we put these standards, guidelines, whatever they are, whoever developed them out there, and we tell local districts that they have to teach that, even though it violates the civil rights of a number of Michiganders, and you don't care what that can put them in trouble with legally-wise? Like, I, I don't understand how this isn't, this is an elephant-sized issue. To our Regional Three Teachers' point this morning, this is not an ant-sized issue. This is significant. This is incredibly significant, and I am very reluctant even to vote yes, to be honest with you, to your amendment, because I, I can't in good conscience say that there, some people believe there are more than two genders. I, I understand that to be true, I'm not hiding from it, I'm not one of those people that people say, that came here in support of these, that sticks their head in the sand. However, I believe that's the foundation of what's violating so many biological girls' civil rights across the state. In sports, in bathrooms, in access to public education, which Title IX was designed to help them gain access, full access to public education. If I say yes to such an amendment that says some believe that, that is a foundation to say, "I guess their civil rights don't really matter in the end." I can't do that.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. You said that the standards or the guidelines that you point to in Section 1 and 2, that it, that schools or people must comply.
MCL suggests that they must comply with the aligned state-approved health education guidelines. That's the verbiage. You're calling them standards, guidelines, so we are, what are they, standards or guidelines? And, and the one statute that gives you the authority to make guidelines, and the one statute that gives us the authority to develop and adopt standards? Again, the what are they and who developed them is the center of what's going on here. So, and when then you say they don't have to follow them, they do have to follow them, according to your statute. My statute, as a State Board of Ed member, there's flexibility locally, but are they supposed to pick up this document and say, "Gosh, which one of these things is a guideline, and which line is a standard?", and, no, no?
Point of order. One second, Dr. Pugh. Are you done?
Yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh.
There was a proposed amendment. Board Member Snyder supported or seconded that amendment, but I think she retracted that support, and so I'm just trying to figure out where we are, because I, it's a lot of swirling here.
I supported it, but I won't vote for it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Evans?
On the amendment only.
On the amendment only.
I'm just clarifying, it's on page...
I violated my own rule. Page 66, 8.2, parents... Page sixty-six, eight point two, parent, parent S H. Number one, to add some believe that. Number two, to believe some believe they. Is that, is that how I understand it?
And some believe, and just, and some believe.
For one or two?
It'll say, two. And gender expression and some believe are distinct concepts. I guess you could say they, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. It's on page sixty-six in the standards.
Just changing a factual to a opinion.
Some believe versus are.
Number two at the top.
Some believe. Yeah, some believe that they are, and, and some believe are distinct concepts.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I'm going to vote in time.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson? Snyder? Tilly? Motion failed.
I tried to help you, Tom.
Okay, so we're back on the original motion to approve the standard guidelines. More discussion. Dr. Pugh, Senator Bullock, and then Ms. Tilly.
Sometimes, sometimes I just.
Pugh?
Oh, after Pugh, okay.
I have what may be a friendly amendment that I would like to share. And as it's coming around, this is on section one, so it's up, let me, I think it's.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Eighteen-ish, twenty. So section one, and I know, we know what happened, is that when some of these items were moved around and put under what is stated on page, so section one is content required by state law. So some of these sections were moved into this, this section, some of these page numbers. We need to make corrections there, because some of these items are not required by law. So inadvertently, when we move some of these paragraphs and subsections, they went under section one, which are requirements. And just for clarity's sake, would like to strike the portions that are not required by law.
Just a clarification, they are required by law, but in a different subsection. We're trying to clean this section up. Yes. Dr. Robinson, thank you, supported by Ms. Lipton, thank you. Any discussion?
Should it be read into?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mitch, since you took them.
Number one.
Dr. Robinson, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Motion to amend four standards is under section one. The topics required by state law to strike the words pregnancy and contraception. One, eight point four, point S H, number one, on page twenty-one. Analyze ways to prevent, and then striking pregnancy and sexually transmitted infections, STIs, including strategies that can be used before becoming sexually active, e.g., communicating with a partner, abstinence, striking the word conception, contraception. Two, eight point five, point S H, number one, on page twenty-two. Determine strategies, including abstinence, that will reduce the risk of HIV and other sexually transmitted infections in striking the words "and" pregnancy. Number three, eight point five, point S H, number two, on page twenty-two. Articulate the benefits of abstinence, postponing sexual activity, and setting personal limits, e.g., aligning with personal or family values, changing the nature of relationships, striking the words avoiding early or unintended pregnancy, back to the text, reducing risk of STIs based on individual beliefs and values. Number four, twelve point four, point S H, number one, on page twenty-three. Analyze factors that contribute to behaviors that increase the risk of striking the word pregnancy, HIV, and other STIs. Do you want the other part read as well, at the end?
No.
Any discussion? Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I will say that these are items that have been identified as problems, along with tremendous amount more problems, but I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
Where President mentioned "we" when we developed these, I, I realize I didn't actually get an answer. So who did develop these health education standards?
We can, we can go back to the beginning when we first introduced this in September to talk about how the standards were developed, how the standards, guidelines were developed.
Who developed them? Is there a list of names?
Can get you that list.
Can we talk about them right now?
We can get you that list.
Who would like to have access to who developed these health education standards guidelines?
Not sure that the team has it in front of them right now.
Names on that list?
No.
Okay. I'll be voting yes on this, but that is a very clear admission that the State Board of Education has not developed these standards, guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh? Did you have a question or comment? Okay, thank you. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett? Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly? Okay, we're back to the original motion of approving the health ed. You already did, you, you already did. Oh, you know what, I do apologize, Ms. Tilly, go for it.
Have to breathe. First, I want to say thank you all for your hard work. Thank you for the presentation as well. Thank you for the updates. I know that you all have been working to, to do updates based on feedback that you've been getting over the past thirty days or so. I do want to address some things. For one, sex education has been around, from what I'm reading, since nineteen twelve in this country. I remember having sex education in school, and I wasn't born back then, but it's been a while since I've been in high school. I graduated over thirty years ago. I know my daughter, who's my youngest, graduated almost a decade ago now. And she, in her class, and because I was a very active parent, going up to the school as well as asking my child what she's learning, I know that she was learning about the LGBTQ community back then, and that's been a minute. So sex education is not new in Michigan. The mention of the LGBTQ community is not new in Michigan. Because control is local, districts get to decide whether they want to have sex education or not. That is not something that M D E or the State Board of Education mandates. And we're not changing that. And I do want, since lies are being addressed, I do want to address a couple of lies that have been told and propaganda that has been spewed. One has recently been addressed by Board Member Snyder, which is, board members are not.
We're not going to call it, anyone liars at the table.
Fallacies, it's propaganda. Misinformation that's been given.
Just state what the fact is and go from there.
Board members are not pushing this. It is our job to adopt policies and standards. Normally, this, and this process is not new. Normally, the Michigan Department of Education presents us with information, policies, standards, and we decide whether we're going to adopt them or amend them. And a lot of times, we make amendments before we.